A lot of times I have been in board meetings and I've walked out into the, after the board meeting. And I've walked out to the parking lot and people have, that had their jaws dropping at questions I asked. They, they were patting me on the back and saying, thank you very much for asking those questions. So that's kind of how I am, I think.
Thank you.
I'll see you again, there's about three minutes left, but how do you think about personal property values versus community benefits?
Thanks, I'm sorry, how do I feel about personal property?
How do you think about personal property rights versus community benefits?
Well, I think that that's about, you know, that's a balancing act, no matter how you word that. I think the community, I think people in the community have to participate in the community. A lot of people ask me in the seventy-one years that you've lived here, what is the biggest change? I said, well, you know, the place is kind of the same. But we don't have the sense of community that we did when I was growing up and in high school. I think community benefit to one person is mean something completely different to somebody else. So again, I would have to weigh what we're discussing. And I, I'm also a long-term person. I want to, the decisions I make today, I'd like to have last for a while. You know, but again, if they are not working, I want to change them right away.
So it's about minute and a half. If you want to sum up about, you know, why you want to be on the planning commission, that would be great.
Well, I, I'd like to be on the planning commission because I think that the planning commission needs to have just a person. I've obviously done this, applied for this position before. And the person that got appointed had been living in Palo Alto for four years. I'm not so sure that he really understands Palo Alto. I understand, you know, the trees were not here when my father was a kid on Bryant Street. And that trees die. So maybe we should be looking at our forest a little differently. And, and that sort of thing. So I, as I say, I think I bring a perspective of a long-term resident that wants to, you know, have his, his son live here. And, and continue to have the quality of life that Palo Alto has provided me. And so I have the time and the will, I guess, to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for applying.
Thank you for your time.
Our next, our next interview is Kathy Jordan. I believe Kathy is online. And I don't think I'm a co-host, I'm not able to enable her. Okay Kathy, you should be able to speak. Also be able to turn your camera on if you'd like, I think. Maybe not.
Okay, you can hear me?
So again, fifteen minutes, you want to do a quick intro?
Uh, sure, yeah. I don't know if you want to take the full, but yes, so members of the city council, thank you very much for the opportunity to interview. For serving on planning and transportation commission, in my case, and or architectural review board. Understand these are difficult decisions facing the city council as well as the commission and review board. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity. Firstly, I just wanted to acknowledge, I know there's, there's a fair bit of divisiveness at times over these issues, difficulties. And I think people do want to move beyond that. To preserve and retain our community's quality of life, while at the same time accommodating development and construction that is in keeping with that. And of course, always keeping in mind, attempting to assist those with little to no income, but their housing needs. Such as seniors, the disabled, and the really low income, for example. While not a land use attorney or an architect, I believe I do have relevant experience. I'm a longtime Palo Alto resident, not like Mr. Ely, seventy-one years, I have to give it to him on that, but a longtime Palo Alto resident. I currently serve as the president of homeowners association of a multi-family unit complex in downtown Palo Alto. Where we're navigating addressing some complex challenges with an aging complex amid state regulations. Our complex is close to Caltrain, so I think I understand the desirability of being near transit for work commute and for other reasons. And also understand how jobs change and transit may or may not serve those unique needs. Also built a home here in Palo Alto, lived in multi-family here in Palo Alto, and currently live in a single-family home, so. Thanks for the opportunity. I hope to offer a fresh perspective. Thank you.
Uh, council member Tanaka.
Yeah, Kathy, thank you for applying, really appreciate it. I heard that you're doing a really good job on the city housing element working group, so thank you for your service there, really appreciate it. And appreciate you stepping up to the board of commission. My question for you is, can you describe the challenges facing multifamily complexes here in Palo Alto?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you so much for that. Thanks for the question. Yes, I'd like to talk about that a little bit as a I think there are a number of challenges that may or may not be considered when we're talking about multifamily as a solution to the state's problems as well as maybe in Palo Alto. Multifamily actually, our complex has a commercial association as well as residential, so it's mixed use. And a lot of folks talk about that as a panacea and a, it's not retail, but it's mixed use. But unfortunately, I, I, my, our experience has not been the case. And although perhaps in the past it could have been managed better, we have commercial that can be at odds with the residential and have different interests and different needs. And, and you're managed by a group of folks that are volunteers in a homeowners association with a professional property manager. But, but yet the only folks who really have vested interests are those who are members of the association and owners of the condominium units. So it, it adds up to a difficult mix that is also amid state regulations to be quite expensive. Rather than thinking that, you know, it will be much more affordable, I think there are some things to be cautioned about. For example, in our complex, we have elevators. Replacing elevator, one of those elevators costs somewhere to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so when you're looking at living in multifamily, everyone have a contribute. You know, as well as having fire alarms and integrating elevators with fire alarms, it's quite expensive, actually. These things don't take place in, in a single-family home, in retrospect. Although of course, you know, the, the cost for buying in for a single-family home is, is much higher. So I just have a few experiences there to share about that. Thanks for asking.
Of course. Thank you for your answer, really appreciate it.
She wanted to ask similar questions. So on the HOA board, it sounds like you, you might have to do a special assessment or something, but what has been the most kind of divisive issue and how, how have you approached it on the HOA?
Well, unfortunately, our HOA has had several lawsuits facing it. And so those are divisive issues and similar to other downtown complexes. We have had water intrusion issues, which of course are also extremely expensive. Unfortunately, there's been an experience we've shared with some other complexes that original construction defects have led to, you know, continuing problems. And so of course, then that can cause divisiveness because some residents may be affected by those original construction defects. Who then think that the homeowners association maybe has not done, you know, it, its job is best taking care of those. But of course, again, you have a volunteer board, you're employing licensed contractors, and even in those situations, not even the licensed contractor is always finding exactly what the source of a problem may be. And similarly, you may have some of these, this divisiveness between the different associations as well in a mixed-use complex. So certainly it's simpler when it's not mixed use and you have two separate associations. And it's less expensive in that, in that way as well.
Vice Mayor Burke.
Yeah, thank you. Kathy, so you've applied to both the Planning and Transportation Commission and the Architectural Review Board. Can you share any thoughts you have or understandings of how those two boards function either differently or similarly? And, and kind of the respective purviews of them and, and how you think you would fit in each of them?
Thank you, that's a complex question. I, I view the architectural review board, you know, as, as the design and review of both potential new construction as well as existing construction. And having built a home here in Palo Alto, I had a unique, maybe not unique to, to, just to me, but I thought it was a unique experience. And that we sought to build a two-story home, which while conforming to all regulations and such, still the planning department wanted to make changes to it. And some of that was dependent upon what folks had built next door to us. So I'm sure that's not a surprise to you all, but I thought that was difficult solely based on what people had done in the past next door to you. In terms of their design and their construction should be influencing what you could do on your parcel and your lot. So I guess I thought that that would be something that I might bring that experience to the architectural review board. Separately, I think planning and transportation commission certainly is dealing with broader issues in terms of the city, citywide. Marrying the two together, planning and transportation to work together, citywide development, both office and residential, so. Not that architectural review board doesn't deal with commercials as well, but I just view it as a broader, a broader mandate of set of on that commission. And I think that I would bring the same experience to bear if you were would consider to avoid me to either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Kathy, thank you very much for applying for this. I, I sort of wanted to ask a, sort of in the same, same general zone as the vice mayor just asked you. As, as a non-trained architect, how, how will you look at architectural review board kinds of projects and issues? You know, particularly not on certain, not on single-family homes, but on sort of larger kinds of things, commercial buildings, mixed-use environments and stuff like that. That you don't have, aren't, aren't what you built yourself. What lens will you use to look at those?
Well, I think that's a fair enough question. I mean, a, a fair question, and I think that the lens I would use that is, that I brought up about building the single-family home. But also on the commercial end, you know, I think Mayor DuBois brought up about property, private property rights versus community benefits. I'm not exactly sure what community benefits means. I would love to have that defined better, so I understood exactly what that balance he was hoping to bring out, was maybe you can help me with that. But I, I think that, again, I would bring the same perspective of, you know, obviously we need to respect people's private property rights, whether it's commercial or, or residential. On, in the same vein, we want to retain the lovely character of our city and preserve the quality of life that we have here and that so many of us have come to enjoy. I, I, I hope that gives some perspective anyway, how we look at it.
Lydia?
Thank you for applying, Ms. Jordan. My question is, in, in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, the city is actually forwarding the S cap. And there are a lot of human-made clean energy technology, but it's also versus against a lot of our natural environment and resources. You know, biodiversity, our living infrastructure such as our mature trees. How do you balance that when a project comes to you? Wanting to do one, which will affect the other, such as our natural environment.
You mean incorporate it into the project? I, I'm afraid I think I would need to know more before I could answer your question. I think that's a, a very good question. And obviously, you're, you're right that it would need to be balanced, but I don't think I know enough to answer it.
Okay. I think an example would be what recently went to, I think PTC with regards to solar panels and discussion of trees was one of them. So when it came to trees or solar panels, you know, then how, how does that become a balance where you don't destruct one or eliminate one in order to have another?
Yeah, that's a very difficult question. And in fact, interestingly, I, I read a recent article about how solar panels actually are filled with quite a few toxic chemicals. An, an interesting article about electrical vehicles, electric vehicles and batteries and such, and how solar panels are not necessarily the environmental panacea that we all would hope. Of course, generating energy is important. But obviously retaining natural landscape and trees would ideally be the best solution in a trade-off of that type.
Glad to hear that you have read up upon it and do see that. Carbon footprint. Thank you.
Allison?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Thanks again for applying. My, my standard question, because in addition to the content of the work that we do, it's important to me that we, how we do our work. So can you provide two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I think that they would say that I try to get things done.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you want me to expand? I'm sorry, I thought I was answering the two words, but I can expand upon that if you, if you like.
More about like how, right?
Well, I think, for example, if I just continue along with our homeowners association, we have a number of maintenance needs in an aging complex and, and as again, as I said, it's a volunteer board. So we have to rally the board together to try to, first of all, take an interest because not everybody realizes that it's beyond their one unit. But instead, actually, we all have to work together to get something done. And we have to rally and we have to also communicate, I mean, I have to communicate to them the importance or non-importance. And, and the priority level of something and the urgency or not to try to get something done. I don't know if that helps.
That helps a lot. Anytime people use the word communicate, I'm on board with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So there's a little over a minute left. You just like to sum up? I guess you're kind of covering both boards at once, so.
Thank, I mean, I really just want to say thank you for the opportunity to interview and present a perspective and hear your questions and have a, an opportunity to engage with you all. Thank you all for your work on so many different things. I know that it's not an easy job that you all have and I just appreciate it and want to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for applying. And our, we can move on to our next interview is Arthur Keller.
Hi, Arthur Keller. Hang on, camera.
See, sorry, Arthur, are you in chambers? There you are. Yeah, so you know, we have fifteen minutes. You want to go ahead and do an introduction?
Yes, I'm Arthur Keller and I, I, can I keep my, okay. So I, I applied for the planning and transportation commission and I, I'm happy to I don't, don't want to take too much time speaking, but I think that I have accomplished a lot since I was on a planning commission from two thousand and six to two thousand, two thousand and fourteen. I'm most proud of starting the bike, the bike bridge over one-on-one. Would have, would have motion to put it on a planning mission to, on the, on the CIP to initiate studying the bike bridge over one-on-one. And now this, this Saturday is going to be finally, and it's going to be finally inaugurated. I'd like to also thank, I also like to take credit for, in two thousand and fourteen, I got the city to participate in the Safer Bay project. Safer Bay project is now underway. That will affect tidal flooding. And tidal flooding is going to, that will affect every, have a good portion of the city. And tidal flooding is now going to be, is, is undergoing a study with respect to economy of cargo engineers and the, and the state and the, and the, and the water district. So we'll see, something to see that in about ten years.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and start asking questions, Eric.
Yeah, why did it take you so damn long to get that bike bridge done? Actually, my question, Arthur, Arthur, you were, it's, it's been, it's been, you were on planning commission for, for a number of years and then it's sort of, there's, it's been a while. What do you think the biggest changes that the PTC is going to face are now, what's since, since, since twenty-fourteen when you were on it before? There's, what are the biggest changes since you were there before, do you think?
First of all, we have to build more housing. And I'm on the housing element working group.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. So we, we, we have to build, since twenty-fourteen, we built a tremendous amount of office space. We didn't know housing. We didn't, so we have to find ways to build housing. We have to find ways to zone for housing. We have the, the developers build it. We have to find ways to zone for housing.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Arthur, for all your service to the community. And so I, I just wanted to follow up on council member Phil Sess' question. As we're looking at needing to rezone for housing, what, what are areas that you think are most promising for being able to add extensive amounts of housing? And in particular, do you have thoughts on how we can do that in a way that doesn't displace existing naturally affordable housing?
This place, the natural affordable housing is a big problem because we, we lost some at the, at the at the president's hotel apartments. That was a mistake. But first of all, Stanford is proposing to build some at, 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 at Welch Road. Stanford is proposing to build on, 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 on the university, the university circles, it's our university circles, a circle around University Avenue. They're proposing to build it and stuff on, replacing the, the McDonald's. But I'm concerned about how much housing they want to add to, to the downtown and to the, especially to, to the replacement of McDonald's over there. But we can build on, on near transit. And there, but we have to be very careful about, I think that we have to have a law that says when you pass, build affordable, when you tear down affordable housing, you have to build that many units of affordable housing. So if you tear down five units of affordable housing, you should build at least five units of affordable housing. I think we set that law and put it to base.
But if that affordable housing is not deed-restricted subsidized, how would we go about assuring a comparable replacement in that regard?
Well, you have to be very careful about what you build there because the, the, I realize that the affordable housing is not de-restricted. Does not always de-restricted, but the, they're naturally affordable housing. The same thing is true for affordable businesses. Affordable retail is also a problem because when you destroy the retail, you put a new building in, the retail is well off the market rates. And that's a mistake too.
Thank you.
Council member Formix.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. It's so nice to see you in person. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the large section in your application for your involvement in community activities. And I hope you enjoy the opening of the bike bridge this weekend.
Thank you.
My standard question, always interesting to see if answers change over time. It's, it's important not only what we do, but how we conduct ourselves with our work. What are two words that people who work with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Dedicated and creative solutions.
Okay. What's an example of a creative solution while I have you?
Well, the, I mentioned two of the creative solutions, which I initiated because respect to the bike bridge and respect to the Safer Bay project. They see, the thing is that sometimes, sometimes ideas come from elsewhere. The other, other cities were building bridges over one-on-one and we were not doing it. So I figured the only way to do it is to initiate doing it by, by having a study of that bridge.
Okay, and getting it in the CIP.
Right.
I'm still hoping for that with Coverley. Thank you.
So Arthur, I know you're, you're on the housing element. How are you thinking about how much housing Stanford should provide in this element?
Well, we have to see how much, for Stanford, Stanford should provide, I said, they're proposing to provide a certain amount of housing. I don't know whether it's a, whether it's four, third, whether it's a thousand units or five hundred units, I haven't figured it out. But I think that they should provide a certain amount of housing that does not impact the environment. You see, and, and, and they, if they build too much housing, that means it has to be too tall. And, and one other thing is that they forgot one site, the site on, on, on quarry road, which, in, which on, sorry. Welch Road, I think it is. No, Quarry Road. Quarry Road and Arboretum is, is the former Bank of America. That, that site, they don't allow us to consider. That, that site is, belongs to Stanford, although it's leased to, to Bank of America and it's going to be, and it belongs to the shopping center. So that, that's a prime site for building housing and it doesn't impact, doesn't impact the, the shopping center one bit.
Yeah, so I know they, I know they proposed some sites. I'm just wondering if you're looking at a top-down, how much do you think they should reasonably? How much housing they should reasonably provide?
Well, I think, I don't think it's a, it's a strict top-down answer because you have to figure out how, how to, you figure out a bunch of bottom-up answers and then you figure out all, totals up. If you figure out, if you, if you do a top-down study, you can, you might, you might impose on Stanford too much or too little. It's, it's context of Bennett.
All right. Council member Koo.
Hi, Arthur. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the same question I asked earlier in terms of balancing, in, you know, I mean, we mentioned building housing, right? And the state is also demanding that we do so, whether needed or not. But how do we balance the natural environment when there is also, when it comes up against human-made technology for clean energy in order to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions?
Well, let's take, let's take an example. I'm putting in a heat pump water heater. It's sitting in my driveway because the, I'm trying to get a permit for putting it in. So I'm going to have to wait for a permit to put it in because the city takes time to put the permit. So that's, that's, that's a, if you figure out whether I have enough electricity to have a permit. So it's a, it's a very hard problem, but I don't know, they, they will figure it out eventually. So, so this, this heat pump is sitting there in my driveway. So I'm waiting for, if I put it in, then I have used less gas, less gas to heat my water heater.
Thank you.
So Arthur, if you want to go ahead and sum up, you know, why you're, why you're applying for the playing, planning commission?
Applying for the planning commission because I feel that the amount that I have to offer the city is, is continuing, is continuing. I would like to offer to my services to be on a planning cushion because I would like to offer to my services to be on a plan cushion because that way I I feel that my my role is to continue on the playing commission. I would like to I'd like to once again. First of all, I I think that I I think that I have done a very good job when I was on the planning commission last time. I have since I have worked on the on the housing element of now. I have worked on the on the on the comprehensive plan. I was co-chair of the comprehensive plan. I have done a lot of things. So I think that with all this experience, I have to offer the city a depth of experience. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Go on to our next interview, which is Chunming New.
And we've lost our screen for the council here, just so you know.
Okay, so Chunming, I am promoting you to a panelist. You should be able to turn your camera on. Yep, you're unmuted. I can see. Can you turn your camera on? Not sure what's happening. There you go. Can you hear us? Hello? So I'm going to suggest that we demote her back to an attendee. I don't know if the city clerk can try to give her a call, see if she's having problems. Can we move forward with this? Shai, Shai, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Is Nissar here?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that applicant has arrived yet.
Okay, so we are getting a little ahead of schedule, but not that much. About Brigham Wilson, is he there in person?
No, sir, we don't have any anyone else in the chambers just yet.
Okay. Well, Chunming was online, but
Actually, sir, we have one person who just arrived. The next person, Nissar, is just walking in, so I can go let them know we can start early.
Okay, yeah, if we can if we can go to Nissar and if we were able to contact Chunming, that would be great. So, Nissar, welcome. These are 15-minute interviews. And we'd like to start by having you kind of introduce yourself and your interest in the planning commission.
Can you please repeat? I didn't hear.
So so we do a 15-minute interview and we'll give you a minute or two to introduce yourself and then we'll start to ask you questions.
Thank you. My name is Nissar Sheikh. And I came to Palo Alto in 1978 to go to graduate school here and have been living in Bay Area since then with few excursions. Last 20 years, I have lived in Palo Alto continuously. And in my retirement, I would like to do some service to the city. And I live a couple of blocks down on Standing Avenue. So I thought this will be a good thing to try. By profession, I've been a mechanical engineer. I've worked on a variety of field from artificial heart to high technology. I have worked as an employee, entrepreneur, and a university professor. With last job as a on the way to retirement as a high school math teacher. Now I do a lot of volunteering, often abroad, you know, for fun as a travel also. But the post-pandemic, I don't think I'm traveling anymore to do any work. So I thought it would be this was quite interested in doing something and when I saw this opportunity, I said, let me come and talk to you folks.
Sounds good. Okay, so we'll ask you a few questions. Lydia.
Thank you for applying. How how would you say your last name?
Sheikh.
Sheikh. Thank you for applying, Mr. Sheikh. You wrote here in your application, safety and environment considerations in meeting needs of transportation and mobility. I have to say, in reading this packet with all the different applicants, you're you're very rare because most people talk about building housing. But you're here talking about transportation and mobility. Will you share what your thoughts are on that?
Well, partly, I thought because everybody is talking about housing. So I thought I'm not going to get anywhere with that, but that's not the only reason. I walk around a lot. And and sometimes, you know, you hear about people getting hit and we all talk about traffic congestion. And I was here about five, seven years ago, give a little two-minute talk with some housing. And we were worried about traffic with the more people coming and all that. So so in general, I just had had this interest of safety and also with pollution and environment and bicyclists being hit or bicyclists hitting pedestrians also. So a variety of such things.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd just like to follow up on Councilmember Cruz's question. So do you have some specific thoughts on on ways that we can citywide, I don't mean in a specific location, but citywide that we should be doing more of to address and solve or reduce or improve our transportation?
Frankly, I don't have a passion and agenda. Often people are just say we got to more put more stop sign and more light. And my my interest is just general. And a bigger thought I had was that I would like to come here as a not as an expert on technology. I mean, on a housing or sociology or infrastructure or anything, just as a living person that will walks around here. And and then, because you always have a specialist and expert to go to, but you want to get a different perspective of a resident. So so that's what I'm thinking. And as the if I get involved, then I will deal with the issues as they arise. One thing I do, you know, I'll always say something. I live in Channing and Homer. They are both parallel street. And once in a while, you see people, not once in a while, I bet. At least I see once a month, at least somebody, you know, driving in the wrong street, which everybody is going to do that. But when you come on Alma, Alma to Channing and Homer, the street on the one side is Palo Alto Foundation. And often people do make a left turn on. And I thought the solution would be so simple. And this is where the expert ignored because they only look at a very big thing, just putting in instead of a red light circular, just put an arrow. And and also there's a very faking, I mean fading no left turn signal that you can barely see. So you know, you know, misty. So sometimes there are such simple solution.
Thank you.
Councilmember Formak.
Thank you, Mr. Sheikh. Good evening over here. Sorry. It's all hard with people all different places. Thank you so much for applying. In addition to the work that we do on councilor boards and commissions, it's also important how we do our work and how we work together. So in your professional life or in your volunteering abroad, what are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Thank you. Well, when you are volunteer, then, you know, there is always good appreciation and there is not too much of a
I'm going to ask you to get a little bit closer to the microphone, just so just so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Yeah. So in volunteer work, you know, like frankly, you are you are always you are you are you have the best acceptance and they have gratitude, et cetera. But there are always other challenges too, because they say, well, sometimes they think you're getting in the way or something you are there for your sake and not to do the work. But I I I've been pretty successful in the sense that when I went to Peru and Chile and I never I did not speak any Spanish at all. And I still I prevail. I mean, it worked out to the point where I had a six-month of some startup Chile project and a university dean came to me and he says, would you come here for two, three months and do something at the university? So I said, well, I can bring a couple of Stanford student. So I went there. And this is all without knowing Spanish. Now, my volunteer work in India, of course, there, you know, I was a saint. But there were other challenger. Here is a rich American, you know, with all those things, you know, from their point of view. And they don't want to hear. They just want my money, which I don't have. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but it's been kind of a, you know, fun thing. Now, as a profession, as an American, that was a totally different thing compared to volunteer.
Okay, so how would people describe your working style when you were in your professional capacity?
In the university, I was very popular because I was a very, you know, a teacher was teaching was my profession. So because I could have made a lot of money as a, you know, with a stock option and all that. Instead, I chose to work as a professor. So there I was relatively very popular. And and industry, I I think people enjoyed my humor. I was, you know, I didn't know I was funny, but sometime, you know, it naturally came out and I thought that was my I I didn't know that. One day I was sitting and we were waiting for in the end of my bosses, then I say something funny. That's not my expertise, but to my mind.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I agree that humor can be helpful.
So thank you for applying. I'm curious, have you watched a planning commission meeting? And what's your what's your understanding of the role and purpose of the planning commission?
I have not, like I said, I have not been involved locally. I've been always abroad kind of doing work, so I have not done it. I've been here a couple of times when some people came and knocked at the door and say, hey, could you come and say something about housing or traffic or something? And I did kind of glanced over what this job involves. And I I thought if you folks find that I could be useful, then I'm sure I'll be able to find ways to serve and help.
Yeah, well, I get we we get a lot of applicants and again, appreciate you applying. And if if you don't make it this time around, I'd urge you to to look at all of our boards and commissions and and apply again if necessary. Eric?
Well, yeah, I was just curious. So thank you very much for applying for this. Just curious if you looked at some of the other boards and commissions as well, so the Utilities Commission or Parks and Recreation, and how did you pick this one?
I I will definitely be looking for all kind of opportunities in future with the city. And the reason I picked up because the word transportation, I thought as an engineer and somehow it looks a little more where I could have more to contribute than say some more socially related.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say the Utilities Advisory Commission is pretty technical, too. As as an engineer.
Well, I will I'll look into it next time. You know, I'm just starting here now.
Yeah, and this is the first time we've done it in person and hybrid. So sorry, it just feels a little disjointed. If you'd like to go ahead and just summarize again your your interests and and we'll wrap up the interview.
Basically, it is like every year I said, okay, I'm gonna go to New Zealand, do this. I'm gonna go this and do this. And now I'm not going anywhere with pandemic. So I really want to just serve. So even if you had something where you are, you know, going and picking up or just like you wanted somebody to mend the office for their volunteer, sit and check the vaccination card, I would do that. So at the moment, you know, I'm open to do anything. But it would be also nice with my 40, 50 years of experience, I wish I could do something more substantial than go to the soup kitchen.
Appreciate it. All right. Well, thank you very much. And we'll move on to our next.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try Chunming again. Chunming, are you able to speak? Were we able to call her at all?
Hello?
Yes. All right.
I hear you.
Good. And I'm going to promote you to panelists. You should be able to turn on your camera if you'd like.
Okay.
So I don't know if you've been listening, but we're doing 15-minute interviews. And if you want to take a minute or two to introduce yourself and your interest in the planning commission, go ahead. Mr. New, are you still there? You're muted.
Hello?
Yeah, can hear you now.
Okay, can I start now?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry for the for the
So I don't know if you heard me, like you to go ahead and just introduce yourself and your interests. And then we'll start to ask you some questions.
Okay. Good evening to everyone. My name is Chunming New. I'm a chemist by training. I have PhD in solid-state chemistry. Over the years, I have worked for several high-tech companies in various capacity from senior scientist to VP of R and D in Boston area, Boston area and the Bay area. Most recently, I have worked as a professor for one of the top engineer university in China. My family moved from Lexington, Massachusetts to Palo Alto in 2003. My wife and I have two daughters. One is working for Google as a PhD software engineer. Another one just received MBA from Dartmouth College this year. She's working in New York City. We fell in love with Palo Alto immediately after we moved here. We appreciate everything Palo Alto provided to us. I wanted to help to make Palo Alto continue to be a great place for family. I saw this opportunity. I thought I could use my knowledge and experience to help, so I applied. Thanks for give me this opportunity. I guess I can answer your question now.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for applying. Pat your hands up. I don't know if you raised it or you lifted up.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, Mr. New, um, can you share with us, uh, any thoughts you have on the most significant challenges we face in planning and, uh, commercial development, the housing development as or transportation?
I, I, it, I, I think I have not really a look at the issue. Uh, but I, I understand the future sustainability. It's a very important issue. Uh, another thing is, uh, any future planning running have to keep two thing uh, in mind. Why is the keeper Palo Alto as a magnet, magnet for business? Uh, especially startup business. So another, another Facebook, uh, Google can start from Palo Alto. Another thing is for young family, continue Palo Alto can, future can continue attract young professional. It's a, I think basically for young, young family, it's very important for future tax. With my, uh, young family, I think you can keep the Palo Alto house market to continue to grow. Uh, tax, tax revenue to grow. With the tax revenue can continue support the Palo Alto K twelve education. Those are, I think, uh, very important issue for any future development.
Thank you. Greg?
Dr. New, thank you so much for applying. It's, it's pretty rare that we get people with scientific or engineering backgrounds that apply. So really appreciate you stepping up and, uh, applying. So how do you think you can use your scientific training on the planning transportation commission in terms of how to make it more effective? Can you talk a little bit about, you know, given your background and your different perspective, how that might be able to be additive to the PTC?
I think certainly my background, it's a, uh, not the, has not involved very much running a safe transportation issue. But I think I was especially involved with several startup. Uh, close to running planning issue was I had to deal with one startup who set up the facility lab. I have to deal with, uh, coding, special fire code, safety issue. Working for startup, I think, uh, for future Palo Alto planning. Uh, three things in my background, I think, uh, could contribute. One is I have worked on nanotechnology, sustainable development for many years. That's all my research involved. There also are two very important issue for future development. I can provide my perspective. Another, I just mentioned is startup issue to continue attract the startup. And then, and then since I was last, uh, so almost ten years I was educator. I think as educator, uh, provide my perspective for future development, especially for keep Palo Alto K twelve with school great. It's, uh, it's going to be very important.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Uh, Eric? Yeah, thank you very much. Dr. Yu, thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
You, you said that, you know, it's important that we keep, uh, in a position to attract young families here. What do you think the most important thing? I mean, there's a lot of reasons not to live in Palo Alto. It's pretty expensive here. Right? What do you think the most important thing we have to maintain in order to keep attracting young families is in your experience?
It's safe living environment. I think another most important thing for young, young family is a K twelve, K twelve education. That's, that's a two thing. At parks, you know, environment, living environment. So that's future development that has to figure in trafficking. And I have moved since two thousand and three here, I, I, I can experience the traffic increase. Airplanes thundering over the sky.
Understand.
So change, I think, I think it has to keep a, a, a safe, nice living place. For young professional family, I think house price probably they can't afford it.
All right. Thanks very much.
Awesome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. New. Thank you so much for applying. In addition to what we do here on council and board and on our boards and commissions, it's important to me how we do our work. And in your professional experience, could you please share with me or your, your, uh, or personal experience? What are words that people use to describe you and how you do your work? So two words that people you've worked with would use to describe you?
I think I work very hard, always, uh, always, uh, uh, self motivated, proactive. So that can prove by my, uh, like, uh, working results, like, uh, to this point, I have eighty seven US patent issued to my name. Uh, I have published in peer reviewed journal more than hundred fifty articles.
Yeah, I can see that you've added a patent since you filled out this application. It was eighty six when you applied.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
On your application, you mentioned, um, small cell towers on utility poles. It's actually a topic that we talked about last night at council meeting. What is your thought about, um, how cities should look at? You know, small cell antennas?
Uh, one says across my house, there is a smart tower. I hated the look. I hated the noise. Even it's across street. Uh, every morning I open the door, I can hear. So I think noise looking. I, I'm also, uh, very much disappointed because when I moved here, we started, actually we started up, not a startup, uh, nano sis company. Uh, there was already a fiber optics. Uh, I think a trial experiment on one street. But until now, we have not the C high speed internet in Palo Alto. It's a, I think it's a quite a shame to the, uh, silicon wall is started place. It's a before, for behind the in, uh, you know, high speed, high speed internet. So I, I think this is an issue city have to figure out a way. So quickly. Small tower, whether it's, whether it's fiber optics. Uh, I certainly like to see the, uh, city utility take up. I feel I like the city utility very much. I, you know, I talk to my friends living in other place all over the area. It's a one of the best operators, uh, utility.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. And, um, you know, we have a lot of applicants. Um, and, and a lot of times people apply more than once. So if you don't, if you don't make the planning commission this round, I'd urge you to look at some of our other boards and commissions. We actually have a utilities advisory commission. Um, which, which could be interesting to you with your background. But again, I appreciate you applying. If you'd like to, um, just go ahead and sum up, uh, we're, we're kind of nearing the end of our time.
I think I pretty much said why I applied. I just want to thank you all for your time. If I was selected, I will do my best to sell, even now that I find another way. Thank you very much again.
Hey, well, thank you again. Thank you for applying. I think our, our next candidate is Brigham Wilson in person.
Hello?
Hi, and, um, I don't know if you've been watching, but this is a fifteen minute interview. We'll give you a minute or two to introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested. And then we'll start asking you questions.
That's great. My name is Brigham Wilson. I live over by Addison Elementary, been in Palo Alto for five years and I love Palo Alto. My name is Brigham Wilson. I live over by Addison Elementary, been in Palo Alto for five years and I love it. And I want to help keep our city's beautiful character while also meeting our, our needs for the future and any growth that may require. I am passionate about city planning and design. I've researched, I've studied best practices, uh, lived in some great cities. And I have a very multi modal perspective because I walk, I bike, I drive over here. I have previous experience with commissions. I was on the library advisory commission for three years, including, uh, a year's chair of that. I know how hard, uh, the decisions that come to both the planning, to both the PTC and ARBR. And I just want to be helpful with those difficult decisions, uh, to keep Palo Alto's future bright.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Council members? Yes, Pat?
Well, thank you for applying and thank you for your service on the library advisory commission as well. In addition to various other, uh, community engagements, I see that you've been on the police academy and you're a community gardener. And in addition to all that, you're an organist at your church. So thanks for your commitment to the community because you know, our community is really what it is because of how many people really uh, love the community and, and commit themselves to it and, uh, serving others. So I, I see that you really talk about a, a passion for city planning. And, um, I'd like to just hear more from you about, uh, how much you've observed the planning and transportation commission, uh, and any particular things about the direction that, uh, or directions that we're going that, that you think that you would add value to or, um, uh, provide, uh, a vision, uh, about where we should go?
Sounds good. My past experience means that I can provide a neutral and balanced point of view. So I do not own property here. I am not a real estate developer with a pet project that I'm trying to push by and, and get approval. I'm not in love with the certain Queen Anne style of house that I think every like house in Palo Alto should adopt and go there. Um, and so I very much want to listen to my fellow citizens and figure out the best way forward for the city. And so part of that is like the, the regional requirement that there is a city to build, I think it's like over six thousand units, uh, in the upcoming years. And that's a lot. That's, you know, when we're, you know, we're seeing Menlo Park building up coming in real, we're seeing the San Antonio development with hundreds of properties down there. And we're kind of looking at, seeing like, well, where, where are we going to fit six thousand while keeping our character? And I think that's going to come from a lot of hard decisions, uh, figuring out how we use our land and what are sort of like, are there changes in zoning that we need to have so that we can provide, um, access to convenient transportation? So we've got like the menu, uh, housing idea for homeless population. And we're thinking of putting it far on the other side of one on one, far away from jobs and transportation. And I think my idea is like, hey, let's put some more density near here where there's like walkability and there's jobs and there's access to things. I love the recent work that's been doing with ADUs and the ability for us to, like, we have parking is an issue in certain high density areas like University Avenue, maybe Calav, but we've built new parking structures there. And I think that's a great example of a way that we can increase our, uh, housing supply without having a very negative impact on the neighborhood. I ride my bike to work and I always go down, uh, Channing and there's an ADU that's just being built there and it fits the style of the house. It looks lovely. And it's like, hey, that's one more out of six thousand to get us there. So I'm, I'm passionate about bringing those perspectives to the PTC.
Great. Thank you.
And this is a, this is another dual interview. You also applied to the ARB, I believe. And, um, so we do, in our code, we do have one spot on the ARB for a non-architect. How, how would you view your role if you were on the architecture review board and, you know, working with professional architects?
I'm excited about that. I have been, uh, I don't know if it's like an armchair quarterback and be an armchair architect. Does that work? Where I, you know, when I went to MIT, it was the first architecture school in the country and I would like go to lectures and, and check on that. Whenever I'm going to cities, I'm walking around and admiring the beautiful, uh, houses or structures that are able to be built while also kind of cringing at some of the choices that can be made that kind of don't fit in and don't stand out. One thing that I love to show when my friends and family visit Palo Alto is our eclectic housing selection here that you have from these like historic, uh, you know, uh, shingle houses to like a modern decoupage. And I think what I can bring is kind of that every man's or every woman's perspective to what looks and what works, what kind of fits in. And so do I know the exact, is that a doric or an ionic or a Corinthian column? And is that architecture appropriate? I don't know. And that's why there's architecture specialists on the ARB. And so I see myself as being that balanced perspective. And I'm not trying to do anything to my house. So I'm not trying to get some things snuck in the ARB. Just here to provide a, a, a citizen's perspective.
Great. Thank you. Lydia?
Mr. Wilson, thank you very much for serving on the library advisory and now expanding into the other commissions. It's really awesome. You mentioned ADUs earlier and I see in your application, you have it also that it is one of the tools uh, in order to provide more, um, housing units in the city. When you talk about encouraging affordability, can you please, um, share a little bit more about your meaning of encouraging affordability?
So it is very expensive to live in Palo Alto. That is like known. And I think almost forty five percent of our city is renters. And when you look at the income of our city, we tend to think of the billionaires and millionaires, but there's many, many folks who are making less and can't afford to be here. They have a lot, a population that's been here for a long time and can afford, could like to appreciate the extra income of having an ADU, but maybe aren't aware of it and don't know exactly how they could do it and are concerned about maybe like the privacy, how to do it. And so I think that's where there's some like, how the ADU, I think what that does is it helps for certain pockets and certain populations of our city in order for them to create housing that is affordable, it's small and able to be there. I don't think that ADUs are going to solve Palo Alto's six thousand units. I don't think everybody wants their backyard to have a mother-in-law suite or something like that. And so I do think ADUs are an important tool that citizens like, it's I'm passionate about it. You all have discussed it. It's been here. There's lots of discussions and there's, and there's community groups that are supportive of doing it. And so I think what it is, is ADUs are a very helpful tool. And some people through lack of awareness or fear of the zoning or hearing about like certain construction challenges, right now, the price of wood and other supplies is really high. Like what can we do to make it easier? Well, also not expecting it to be this solve, like pan solution that's gonna Like what can we do to make it easier while also not expecting it to be this solve, like pan solution that's going to solve all our problems?
I was just interested in the encouraging affordability. So I was just trying to understand, would that be deed restriction for the ADUs or, um, or, um, or is it mainly to help the property owner who is building the ADU so that they would have a little bit more income to continue living here? So, yeah, what, what, how, what is the affordability?
Aspect of it? So I think there's, I think in the application I talked about, it was more saying we have limited supply in our city and therefore the cost goes up because the demand is high. As we continue to build housing units such as ADUs, it keeps housing prices more stable, which then will hopefully make it as incomes go up more affordable for families, young folks, students, nurses, teachers to live in our city. That's what I meant in the application. However, there is still a significant population that's been here for decades. And although maybe the property taxes haven't gone up, $5 a gallon kind of hits all of us. And having that extra income is also something that may help them stay in place. Or it could be something where, hey, they can have a family member go back and they're allowed, then, then they're able to stay in the city longer.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your interest in the different commission and boards.
Thank you.
Allison.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson. Welcome back. Thanks again for serving on the library advisory commission and, and being part of the process of celebrating the end of its work. So, uh, if, we'll see, I'll, I'll go with my standard question and then if there's just a little bit more time, I'd like to ask you a question about your ARB submission. So one of the things that's really important is not just what we do here on council and the, and, and the boards and commissions, but how we do our work. So can you give me two words that other people would use to describe you and how you do your work? It could be, uh, the people who sing when you're playing the organ. It could be people at Google. It could be people from the library advisory commission. What, what are, what are two words that people use to describe you and how you do your work?
I think people would describe me as kind and organized. So I'm very empathetic trying to think of other people and what they need. I like to help others and it makes me feel good. And that's why I'm involved in the commission. That's why I love being part of the community. I'm also extremely organized. Helps me at Google. Um, my wife is learning to appreciate it more. I think I might be a little too organized for her. But I like, I will prepare for these meetings by reading all the documents of what, what are the relevant code that I need to apply to this? What are the best practices that I can look to? Like, I want to come fully informed, fully ready to have a great discussion and understanding sort of precedent in the future of what can happen. I'm organized and I'm kind.
Great. I'm going to take a quick follow-up. Um, just with respect to the ARB, I noticed that the projects you suggested, mentioned, um, aren't in Palo Alto. So is there a project in Palo Alto that you particularly admire or cringe at? Those were your words, um, uh, from an architectural standpoint?
From like an architectural style?
Yeah.
I think from an architectural style, I love walking up Calper Street. And there's these historic homes that are up and down it as you get closer to university. And I love that we have the historic preservation that keeps that character there that makes it so that there's a feel. And I mean, one's a B and B, one's like a law office, other ones are just private homes. But those just make it feel like you belong to a place that has meaning, that has history, that has like persona to it instead of just kind of McMansions, Cookie Kanner. And so I love those going there. Um, kind of in the same stand, uh, there's a how, in a little bit farther south, in the similar like historic neighborhood, there is like a modern shoebox which provides a lot of privacy to the owners of the house while kind of sticking the middle finger to the neighbors where there's just like blank walls and you can't see anything. There's no porch, there's no windows, there's nothing sort of saying, hey, this is a this is like a welcoming facade. It's saying, this is our security compound and we're like building off our own little area to be there. And so I think those are kind of the like, good example is this like openness and kind of like fitting in. And the bad example is saying, forget about the rest of the neighborhood. We're going to just prioritize our own property, our own. Does that?
That does. Thank you so much. And thank you to the mayor for allowing me two questions.
Of course. So we, you know, you've kind of been talking about the, the 6,000 units. How do you envision us being able to hit that number? I don't know if you've been following the housing element working group. But, um, any thoughts on other ways to get to 6,000?
Yeah, I applied to be on that working group too. I think that was very popular. There's like 80 people trying to be on it. That's going to be a tricky challenge. If it was obvious, then it wouldn't be so hard for us. And we wouldn't have like had all of these regional and state mandates in order for it to occur. I think some of it, um, is to the ADUs helping there. I think some of it is allowing for some additional, uh, density. Like there's the new construction that's, uh, proposed on university where it's like two dentist's office and they're trying to put into, uh, a condominium unit. And we have some beautiful condominium units like the Hamilton or on Channing, there's like a shingle one there or like the assisted living just north of university. I think we have really good examples of developers building higher density condos in areas that already are high density that have wonderful character, that preserve the feel of our city and allow that to happen. I think there also is the need to like prioritize near transportation. So we have Cal Ave and we have some single-family houses that are literally hundreds of feet from a major Caltrain station with hourly transit up into the city. And so I think prioritizing density near transportation, near jobs is an appropriate feel while preserving the sort of single-family, uh, zoning, uh, is sort of the balance that we're going to have to work for. But I do not have like the easy solution. If I did, we wouldn't need the PTC, we wouldn't need the housing development. And so it's more like, hey, I'm willing to help and be a part of this conversation and effort that is going to take us 10 years, uh, to, to get there.
So there's about a minute left. If you'd like to give a little summation.
Sounds good. Uh, thank you so much for the time. I am so excited. Uh, for the PTC would probably be my top choice. But if there's like three geniuses that just came earlier than me, then give me the ARB spot. Let me, let me serve, let me help. I love being part of the library commission. I loved, um, the procedure, the meeting prep, um, serving as the chair, having the vision, partnering with city staff who are so capable and, and so helpful. And then being able to make big decisions, like when we got rid of overdue fees. That was a really big improvement for our community. I'm excited about how the PTC and ARB in the coming years, I can be a part of some of those big decisions that will help. And so I'm fully committed to come in and, and compromise and figure out what's the best way for our city to move forward and make it better. And, uh, yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, in person. Our, our next interview, I believe, is Keith Rechtal. Is Keith there?
Yes, sir. He's here.
So Keith, I don't know if you've been listening. It's a 15 minute interview. And if you want to take a minute or two to introduce yourself and your interests.
Okay, I've been Palo Alto now since 96. So it's been quite a while. It's a great place to live. People want to be in Palo Alto and that's a mixed blessing because that means that we have demand for real estate and we also have higher prices for real estate. So it's a mixed blessing. Fortunately, we'll be adding housing, a lot of housing. And when we do that, we really have to think about the quality of life and the quality of life for the new people coming in. They should experience the same quality of life that the current residents do. We're not going to warehouse them and cram them into a new neighborhood. We want them to have the Palo Alto experience too. But we also have to remember the residents who live here. We don't want to impact them unduly. There will be some impacts. We need to try and minimize that, but we have to keep both sides, both for the new residents and the existing residents. Keep that in mind as we're designing it. Uh, we're adding a lot of housing, but we can do it thoughtfully. I think we can. Another issue is we just can't build micro units. You know, Palo Alto is a great place to raise a family and we need to ensure that some of these new units are appropriate for families. And so we have to span a variety of family sizes, but also a variety of incomes. We need to have affordable housing in both passively affordable and subsidized affordable. And that's not easy. We have a lot of things that we have to do. And finally, it's just not housing. You know, we have a lot of retail businesses are in deep trouble now. COVID and the economy has just changed. Uh, they're having a hard time even before that with the internet. So all these changes, we really have to work closely with business community and, and help them. It's, and it's just not a sales tax issue. Having a vibrant retail community, that's part of our quality of life. So we have to make that a priority.
Thank you. Uh, Pat.
Well, Keith, thanks for, um, for all of your service. Um, you're currently on the Parks and Rec Commission and the Housing Element. You spent last several years also on the X cap and the NV cap. So my question is, which of those different groups have you found to be most important to the city? That's like picking your favorite child. I realize that's a little difficult. And also which has been most effective within their task and, and, uh, and why?
That's a good question. Um, you know, I was a park guy first. That's, you know, the, you can take the park guy out of the parks, but you can't take, you can't take the park guy out of the commission, but you can't take him out of the parks. I really enjoy the fact that when you make a decision for parks, it's really affects the day-to-day life of people. And a lot of the other things are kind of big picture. If you're looking at housing development, it doesn't have the same day-to-day effect for the bulk of the population. But the ramifications of not having a new swing set are, is not the same as having 6,000 housing elements. And so I think from the most important, I think it is the Housing Element Work Group that has such, going to have such an impact of we could do 6,000 units really badly. We could do 6,000 units well. And that, there's a big difference between those two. So, uh, but from a effectiveness standpoint, I think the, the parks commission has been very good. I mean, Darren Anderson and Rob DeGosse before that were just excellent managers. And, uh, that makes your life easier. You really feel like you're pushing the same direction. That's, that's a good thing.
Thank you. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Rechtal. Good evening. I can't help but notice that you did not mention the NV cap in your answer. So we'll just, we'll just leave that aside. Um, in all of this service and in your, um, professional life, what are two words that people who work with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
It's a collaborative incompetent. I think, I mean,
Sorry, competent?
Competent, yes. When you're an engineer, you're always working in teams and most people are, there are very few solo engineers. And so you have to collaborate with people and you have to sometimes let other people have their way. You're not always going to be right. And there's quite often cases where I thought I was right and people convinced me that I was wrong. And, and the nice thing about engineering is that you can run simulations, you can do test hardware and, and check it out. It's a little harder when you're talking about building buildings and things like that. You, you, if the building is bad, it's there. And so, uh, we don't have the same latitude that you have in, in engineering. But, uh, being collaborative and respecting other people's opinions, I think that's valuable no matter what you're doing.
Can I do a quick follow-up? Um, can you give me an example of a time you've changed your mind, preferably on one of these city things?
Oh. Foothills Park, when it first came, I really thought that, uh, there was a big danger of things going bad and Foothills Park is so loved by the community. I wasn't eager to take it on, but the people on the ad hoc did a really good job of scrubbing it and trying to find out how can we let in our neighbors and share this asset with our neighbors without ruining it? And I thought they put protections in it and I, I really feel badly that their plan was never implemented because I think it would have been a much better opening than what occurred. Do the lawsuit and we had to open it up and we didn't have the planning ahead of time. That was very unfortunate, but I, I thought that the, the work group beforehand, the ad hoc really did a good job of thinking hard and trying different things and they collaborated and they changed their minds within that ad hoc quite a bit. And I think what they came out with was a very good, very good project.
Um, I had the privilege since I was a liaison that year of watching you change your mind and having my own, my own changed as well at the same time. So, so thank you for that example.
Lydia.
Hello, Mr. Rechtal. Um, thank you for serving on all of those committees. And since my colleagues have already mentioned many of those committees. And obviously you've had a lot of touches with, with the, um, residents and the community in general. What are some of the, what are three of the more bigger things that the community is looking for in terms of benefits?
You, you're talking about for PTC or?
Well, through your work in the, um, housing element through NV cap, you know, with the, with the great separations on Parks and Rec, uh, obviously you've had a lot of communication with many different, uh, community members. So what are some of the things that they've told you that matters to them? Whether it's through preservation or through production, you know?
Yeah, we, we started with NV cap, I mean, NV cap, uh, X cap. I went around on my neighborhood and asked people, what do you think of this? And what do you think of that? And more often than not, people said, I just like it the way it is. I love living in Palo Alto and I don't want things to change. And they said, is there any way we can just not change it? Right? And I live close to the, uh, crossing down Charleston. We have a loud horn that comes through and with this great separation, that loud horn will, will just disappear. And whatever we have will probably be much quieter than we have today. But the, the status quo is very appealing just because people love their lives in Palo Alto. And I think they're nervous that something's going to wreck that. And they, because status quo is so good, they're willing to put up with things like horns because it's what they know. But the other thing that really enjoys their neighbors, they really, that, and that's where like, from a park standpoint, that's really, uh, one of the things when I talk to people about parks is I want to be able to do things with my neighbors. I want to be able to go out and play catch with my kids. I want to be able to interact and, uh, using parks as a neighborhood gathering spot is very popular. That, uh, the, my particular street, we don't have a, a park nearby and we don't have the same interaction as the, our neighbors three blocks away have a park nearby and they get together at the park and they have potlucks and they do things that, you know, good old American, uh, get togethers. And that park facilitates a lot of socialization. And I think people really like that.
Yeah, I, I know that you touch a lot of people, you know, in terms of communications and so forth. So through all your different roles. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you very much for applying for this. Um, I was really struck in your application. You made a, uh, you had a couple of lines about if we're going to add 6,000 housing units, we ought to worry about transportation and traffic. And I wonder if, uh, I wonder if you'd, uh, put some color on that as well, because I think that's a, that, that's a, that's a very thoughtful, uh, kind, kind of view.
Yeah, it's, it's hard because you're going to add 6,000 people. There will be more people moving around the city. And we need to do the, the best we can to reduce the number of trips. And so that is by building, um, businesses nearby. So they don't have to get in the car and drive. They can walk down the street. I walk over to San Antonio. It's about, about a mile. And the reason I can do that is there's a ped bike bridge there and I can cross over. And every time I walk over and get my groceries, I've saved a car trip. Someone else who's on the road doesn't have to wait for me at the light. I don't have to spew out gasoline fumes. There, there's a lot of advantages to having things nearby where it's walkable and bikeable. That, that's a really a big thing. The other thing you can do is that, uh, you know, building your transit, uh, you, you can, um, take into account the fact that, uh, people may be driving at different times. And so if you can balance out, if you cluster all the businesses together, like the research park, for example, you have this big rush in in the morning and a big rush out. Whereas if it was mixed around and you had some housing in the research park, you would be adding trips there, but they would be counter commute trips. They'd be leaving, if they were driving and they weren't working in the research park, they'd be leaving the research park at the time when other people were coming in. And so that counter, uh, commute would mitigate some of the effects. The problem comes in is when you, all the traffic is going in one direction and that, that just adds for waits at lights.
Let me ask a, a question about the NV cap. So if you could wave a magic wand, but it was still kind of economically viable, what, what would you do with the fries site?
Yeah. The fries building is a very difficult. The fries building is very difficult because in a perfect world, we could go through and we could rebuild it then, use that for retailer, a community area. I'm skeptical we could pull that off. I think that'd be a really hard thing. So I think overall of the best thing, depending on whether it's historical or not, the best thing may be starting from scratch and, and not keeping it. That, that really, not everybody agrees with that. There's a lot of, there's a big push in the community to, for preservation. It, that has a potential, but I would be nervous that we might be shoring something, this, this preservation in, that really changes the neighborhood. And that maybe having a, a small scale neighborhood there would be a better use than trying to take this old building and rehabilitate that.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. Any other questions for Keith? Keith, you want to just go ahead and sum up kind of your, your interest in planning commission?
I mean, as I mentioned, Palo Alto is a great place to live. We have great parks. We have great libraries. We had the very first bike boulevard in all of the nation. We have things like the Junior Museum, which is reopening. We have the Magical Bridge. We have a lot of really good things that other cities don't have. And we just don't want to screw it up, right? We're, we have a lot of challenges and we have to keep that quality of life in mind. And if we do, I think we'll continue to have an exceptional city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I don't think our next candidate is here and we're scheduled for a break. Let's try to take a 10-minute break and come back and then hopefully one of the next candidates will be available. So seven o'clock. Thanks. Okay, I believe we're back. Our next candidate is for HRB. And I'm not sure, is Alyssa online or in chambers?
Sir, she's here in person.
Okay, great. So this is a 10-minute interview. If you can come up to the microphone. Please introduce yourself. Tell us about your interest in a minute or two, and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor and council members for having me here this evening. My name is Alyssa Eagleson Chislevich and I've applied for the position on the Historic Resources Board. I would like to serve on the board because I have a strong appreciation for the historic richness of Palo Alto. And I also have relevant professional experience from the related field of art and historical object conservation. I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about myself this evening. My appreciation for Palo Alto's history began as a child. I actually grew up in Palo Alto and I'm a graduate of Gunn High School. I continued my education at Stanford where I majored in art history and minored in archaeology. And I then pursued graduate studies in art conservation and art history at New York University, where I specialized in the conservation of three-dimensional art and historical objects. I also hold an MBA from the Haas School of Business at UC Berkeley. I'm currently the conservator at SFO Museum, the museum at San Francisco International Airport. And I've previously held positions at the Fine Arts Museums of San Francisco and the Metropolitan Museum of Art. I've worked as a consultant on architectural preservation projects that required the involvement of an objects conservation specialist. I think that my background in art conservation gives me a good understanding of the, many of the historic preservation issues that come before the board, including those of historic designations and building reuse and modification. I also understand historic preservation from the perspective of a homeowner. I live in a category two historic home in the Professoreville neighborhood. So I have personal insight into the household level joys and challenges of being the steward of a historic structure. There is so much that is wonderful about Palo Alto's history. And I really grew up appreciating that and really being immersed in it. And from significant works like the Theophilus Allen House in Professoreville, which I still marvel at every time I walk by it, to the Burj Clarks that dot various neighborhoods of Palo Alto, to the iconic Eichler developments. There is so much about Palo Alto's architectural history that is rich and fascinating. Palo Alto's history in the context of the peninsula and the development and changing peninsula over time, that Stanford University, and also the history of the technology industry are also fascinating. And I would really value the opportunity to be a part of the city, city's stewardship of these historical resources. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Very impressive background. And I have to say, I really love the exhibits at the airport. And it's awesome that you do that. I mean, it really makes walking to your gate, I think it just elevates SFO. How did you get that position?
So I actually started off, it used to be that the position there was under contract with the Fine Arts Museums of San Francisco. So I was actually working most of the time at the Fine Arts Museums of San Francisco. And just coming down to the airport, one, maybe two days a week. And as the airport position and the program there grew and grew, my role there expanded and now I'm fully on staff there.
Yeah, anyways, it's awesome.
Thank you.
My question, you, you mentioned a little bit about fries in your application. And it's still something that the council is, is working on. And again, it, you know, assume with some consideration for economic viability, if you could maybe wave your magic wand, what would you see at the fries building?
Yeah. So I mean, I, I have some familiarity with the project, although I, I don't know if I'm necessarily familiar with all of the potential alternatives for the site at this point. However, reading the Page and Turnbull report, I mean, it, it is clear that the site does possess historical significance because of its role as a cannery, which I thought was interesting. That's actually one of the things I find really fascinating about preservation is sometimes the, the reason why something is significant isn't necessarily the reason you initially think. I think at least when I went into reading that report, I thought they were going to be talking a lot about the architecture of the building. But in fact, no, it wasn't so much the building's architecture as it was the function of the building and the significance of the building, kind of within the historical context of, you know, industrial Palo Alto. So that, that, I thought that was very interesting. You know, given that the building has been found to have historical significance, I think that there, I, I think there is an important need to acknowledge that. But I also see preservation as a very living, you know, and adaptable sort of, you know, sort of endeavor. So, you know, preservation can take a lot of forms. Because the building is significant, I think that really does need to be taken into consideration in terms of a long-term plan for the site. But I, I can envision often, you know, a variety of, you know, But I can envision often, you know, a variety of, you know, specifics that can be, you know, actually like involved in the implementation of a preservation plan.
Thank you. I'll listen.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm going to practice this, Ms. Eagleston-Ceslevich. Close, okay. Yes, thank you so much. And I echo the mayor's comments about that, obviously, most of us fly United if we know, if we know that. So my question is less about what it is that we do and more about how we do our work. So one of the things that's important on council and our boards and commissions is how we work together. So in your professional experience, it could also be personal or volunteer experience. What are two words that people who work with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
So I think thorough is one thing that would come up. Being thorough is really important as an art conservator. I need to understand thoroughly the objects I'm working on because, you know, it is a hands-on process. And I do have a strong responsibility because, you know, if I'm not thorough in my research, if I'm not thorough in my testing, I could really damage something in a way that isn't necessarily reversible. So it's important to be thorough, and it's important to, you know, do a job precisely and well. And I try to bring that to the work I do at Hands-On, but also the work I do when it comes to things like looking at how the museum spaces are specified in construction documents for the airport, or how, you know, how we research objects in a show to make sure they're going to be safe. So I really do try to bring that thoroughness to everything I do. And then I also do see myself as, you know, very collaborative. Within a museum, we do have specialists in a variety of different areas. And we all have to work together to, you know, ensure the safety of, you know, our objects, of the collection, and then to put on shows that, you know, people find interesting. And in the case of an airport, you know, are resilient to that environment as well. So there's a lot of problem solving that goes on. And it's something that, you know, my colleagues and I, we have to, you know, go back and forth on a bit. We have to iterate, we have to think of different solutions. We have to problem solve for, you know, object types we haven't necessarily seen or worked with before. And so that collaborative process is something I really, I really value.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Or Eric, sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much for applying. And yeah, one more person who likes the art in all those united, united gatewalkways.
Oh, thank you.
I'm curious, you mentioned you live in a category-two house in Professordville.
Yes.
And did, did you select that house specifically because of that? And if so, how did that come about, or did it just happen?
So, you know, I had definitely always really wanted to live in a historic home. You know, it's a, it's a fun challenge, it's a challenge that really excites me. And to be, you know, living in an environment where you can kind of sense, you know, the history and the, like, the high level of craft that was typically involved in buildings of that area is, is an opportunity I really, really always wanted to have. And then, you know, when it came to actually finding the house, we were just, we were very fortunate. You know, so it was an opportunity we sought out, and we didn't know if it was going to happen or not. And I think we're very thankful that it did.
And so then, would you recommend that experience to other people based on the interaction with the city? But then another way, is the, is the city, in your experience, is the city helpful for that, and the HRB helpful for that, or is it a problem?
So far, my interaction with the city's been pretty limited in terms of needs of our own house. We did have an issue with a street tree root, and that went very well. So it was a minor issue, but that went well. I can't speak to anything else.
Thanks.
Great, so these interviews go very quickly. It's about a minute left, if you want to sum up your interest. And one thing, I don't know if you may be aware, this, this board does require some going to classes and certification.
Okay, yeah, that, that's, that sounds great. I certainly love continuing education opportunities. So I'd just like to, you know, finish up with, and, you know, thanking you all again for the opportunity to be here this evening and the opportunity to tell you a bit about myself and about my interest in the Historic Resources Board. I hope to have the opportunity to use my professional experience and enthusiasm for preservation to serve the community in Palo Alto and all of its wonderful historic resources. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Great, thank you very much for applying. Our next interview is Peter Baltay for the Architectural Review Board. I believe he's in person.
In person, yes.
Peter, you know how this works, if you want to give a quick.
I've got a quick statement to read. I don't have any closing statement, however, so this will be, be it for me. My name is Peter Baltay. I own and am the principal architect at Topos Architects in downtown Palo Alto. I've been a local business owner and architect for over 25 years, and have spent my entire professional career in Palo Alto. For the past six years, I've also been a member of the Palo Alto Architecture Review Board, an endeavor that I find both time-consuming and rewarding. In the past few years, I've given much thought as to how the Architecture Review Board can best promote orderly and harmonious development and enhance the desirability of residences' investments in the city as required by city code. It's clearly a balancing act. We want to process development applications in a timely manner, beholding to high standards of design excellence and civic compatibility. But to be honest, it's also a question of how to bring a diverse group of architects, developers, and property owners closer to the collective view of the five Architecture Review Board members, who themselves are really professional advocates for the city council and the town's residents as a whole. This is what I do professionally every day, helping to guide the dreams and desires of my clients through a myriad, through a myriad of budgets and bureaucracy, collectively producing buildings and landscapes of beauty and utility. To succeed, I need to offer a clear and enticing architectural vision, supported by a knowledgeable and experienced understanding of design and construction, and then be open to collaborative and persuasive ideas. These are skills that I believe can also be of great use on the Architecture Review Board. I see a Palo Alto that continues to grow and develop, but with buildings that are respectful of their context and place in history. Buildings that are built of today's materials and technologies for tomorrow's businesses and families. I also see a Palo Alto that is running out of housing options for its ordinary citizens, a Palo Alto that few of our children can afford, not to mention our teachers and civil servants. A Palo Alto where operating a business is increasingly hampered by the difficulty of attracting quality employees due to high housing costs. While the Architecture Review Board does not play a direct role in issues of housing production, it is imperative that we, that as we increase the density of our built environment to accommodate more housing, we do so carefully, deliberatively, and with much attention to the impact new projects have on their surroundings. It is also important that we review and approve projects in a timely manner. Housing is generally not the preferred project for most local developers. So adding additional costs and delays through lengthy reviews, searching for the perfect, will prove counterproductive. The answer, I believe, is to hold tight to high standards that our community has established, while providing extremely direct and clear feedback as to what will make a project comply with these standards as early and as often as possible. I offer a deep understanding of architectural design and construction knowledge, along with comfort in reading and understanding zoning codes and legal processes. The ARB operates within the confines of public hearings and required findings. And it's only by being able to assess whether a proposal is, for example, compatible with the immediate environment of the site, or whether it promotes harmonious transitions in scale and character, that proper judgment can be offered. Finally, I believe that after 25-plus years of local practice, working with hundreds of Palo Alto residents and property owners, earning the trust of numerous planning and building officials, and I hope the respect of my colleagues, I am well positioned to help bring the many together to build an even better Palo Alto. I welcome your questions.
Eric?
Hey, Peter, thank you very much for, for reapplying. I wanted to ask your sort of advice on, you know, so we're, we're moving for at least HAA compliant projects to objective standards. What should all our expectations be of how good, of how well those are going to meet our needs? Right, and what, and what we can get to? What do you think, kind of in the middle of this?
Well, I'm really worried. I think that we're taking a very complex thing that's hard enough to figure out subjectively and trying to codify it into a series of written descriptions that I don't think are going to work that well. I think we should be very careful to, to limit that to where we need to do it only. Don't expand it any more than you have to. And let's leave ourselves a mechanism to test and adjust, to come back when we have to, to adjust it easily. When we were doing that process, for example, we, I tried to get written into there a few places where the director had the ability to adjust, say, a list of materials. So rather than having to get back to council for materials that were or were not appropriate, just let the director maintain a running list. As times change, it's easy to adjust. It's not the best thing from a design point of view. Maybe it's what we need to do to increase housing, but let's do it carefully with some thought.
I don't, I don't recall that adjustable list making it in there. Was it in there?
It was when I left through with it. We, it was regarding different materials that were allowed. And I think there was a question of whether concrete was a proper material for the finish on a building. And there was some debate over whether that really is suitable at a direct level. Certainly to codify that as a yes or no, I guess I'd say no most of the time. It's generally not unless a very skilled architect is using it. But we had put that on a list, I'm sure of it, that then the planning director could maintain the list and didn't have to go back to city council for approval every time. I don't know what staff does with it, though.
So I think we referred back to ARB, some consideration of kind of higher standards, I guess, on facades and massing. What are your thoughts, again, on creating these subjective standards, but also getting kind of architecturally beautiful and interesting projects?
Well, what you're seeing is the result of quite a bit of work by, by five pretty, pretty good architects, I think. And, but Tom, we're operating in a vacuum. I mean, if you ask me to describe a quality building with a series of numbers, it's really hard. So my thoughts are that it's, it's maybe 80% okay now. It's going to need adjustment as we learn. So let's, let's be careful that we can do that some. Let's not hold out high expectations that this is a great thing. This is something we have to do for a larger societal goal that we all, we want to do. But let's be careful. Am I answering your question? I can't quite tell.
Yeah, yeah, you are. And one other question, since I don't see any other hands. I know we, we allow one non-architect on the ARB. I believe you served with, with one previously. What, what's your thought about having a non-architect on the ARB?
Well, Winfirth was a land use attorney, and she was great working with her, both because she was very knowledgeable about, about specific legal issues that we tend not to be, or we tend to treat too lightly, and that's not good. She also was wise enough to know when to step back. I think the right non-architect can work well. Someone who's not too, thinks they know more than they do, perhaps, is another way to put it, would, would really be a problem, I think. The members of the board right now are really pretty good. Everybody understands the actual nuts and bolts of what we do, and that helps. I was asked earlier today, I think a landscape person would be really helpful on the board. So a lot of issues we deal with involve landscaping, and none of us are professional landscapers. So maybe a non-architect but a landscaper would be a good idea.
Allison?
Thanks. Since you mentioned Mr. Baltay that you don't have a closing statement, I'll ask the standard question. How would your colleagues on the ARB, or your colleagues in your architectural firm, or your clients describe you? And you can say one or two words, since we're running out of time.
Well, I'm a very capable architect, and many people say that about me, so he knows what he's doing, so to speak. But also, I try very hard to bring people along with me. It's never about, about me saying what to do, rather trying to lead everybody in a direction that we all want to go. And that's, that's proven well when I was the chair of the board previously, that you have to sometimes sit back from what you strongly feel to try to get, get five votes to do what you think, what everybody wants to do. And I, I think I do that.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Our next candidate is Bin Zhao. I believe he's on Zoom. Bin, I promoted you. You should be able to also turn on your camera if you'd like.
Mayor Du Bois, our schedule says that Manix Patel was next.
Tom, sorry. I'm looking at the book. You know, one second.
What says Mr. Zhao?
I think, I think those of us in council might have printed ones with the updated schedule. That might be what's going on.
I agree. Okay, sorry, we will demote.
Temporarily.
My book says Manix Patel, but is it Manoj? From the City Clerk, up here? What? Manoj, are you able to speak?
I am here, but there we go.
There we go. Okay, so there's 10 minutes, if you want to tell us about your interest in the ARB.
Okay, so you can hear me okay?
If you get a little, your little sigh.
How about now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so let me first clear up. Manix Patel, Manix is a nickname of mine, which everybody in the architecture industry knows me by. My real name is Manoj Patel. I was born in San Francisco. I've grown up in Palo Alto, and I've grown up in the city of Lodi as well. I've went to elementary school in Palo Alto. I think it was, believe it was called Creekside Elementary back in the day. High school in Lodi, junior community college in Stockton. Along the way, I've won a couple of gold medals in architectural detailing, drafting, and design through VICA, which is now Skills USA. I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree from Cal Poly Pomona, in class of 98. My parents and I have also owned a motel in Palo Alto located at 3339 El Camino Real. And we've been here since 1969. So my parents and I have really seen the El Camino corridor change and grow over the years. I've, along the way, I've worked with many firms in Sacramento, Los Angeles, Stockton. And I've been working with Tony Carrasco at Carrasco and Associates as a project architect for about 15 years now. And I have a, I've worked on a wide range of projects from my early career as to date. And most of them were K through 12 schools. We've done churches, community centers, retail, mixed-use, lot of, lot of hotels and motels, multifamily, residential. With Tony notably, I think the buildings are still standing now. We've, I've, was the project manager on the 325 Litton Building, 382 University, the Allied Arts Guild in Menlo Park. The big project between College and Oxford on El Camino Real, the Hotel Keen, and many other numerous tenant improvement projects for developers and venture capitalists in, in and around Palo Alto. Also, there was one up on Sand Hill Road that was very nice. I have a really thorough knowledge of the building codes, because I do a lot of construction documents. You know, the California Building Code, mechanical code, plumbing code, fire code, Cal Green, the LEED guidelines, California, the new California Energy Code. I've even worked with the Division of the State Architect. We also focus a lot on green and sustainable projects. And we've, I've gotten to work with a lot of the departments within the city of Palo Alto, and a lot of, and a lot of the planners, plan checkers. You know, I've worked with Russ Reich, Amy French. I've worked with, you know, people, people, as a hotel owner, I worked with, I've almost worked. You know, people, people, as a hotel owner, I worked with, I've almost worked with every single department, including, you know, fire. The Palo Alto Police Department, the code enforcement, Public Works. And a lot more. We, as an architect, we always, you know, have to know about the Palo Alto zoning regulations, the signage is. The general design guidelines and the standards. In general, throughout Palo Alto, as well as the El Camino Corridor and South of El Camino. I've read the twenty thirty Comprehensive Plan as well. And I feel as a hotel owner and a architect. I feel that it would, it would be really nice to help the existing ARB board on, you know, decision-making. And I can really give my perspective as a hotel owner and an architect on various projects that. Will come in to the ARB for review. Currently, I'm also working on a historical project. I am the project manager for the Cardinal Hotel. Where we just bumped that category from a level three to a level two. And we will be bringing something into the city pretty soon. So with that being said, I am open to questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I noticed that you mentioned six thirty-six Hamilton, I think. Is that a prospective project you're talking about there? About the existing building?
Six thirty-six Hamilton project, I believe, was a question online that I answered of what one project that stands out.
Yeah, so you said you're, we're waiting years and years for.
Oh, yeah.
For a concrete and glass structure.
In the, in the architecture field, you know, I'm a big fan of. Tadaw Ando and Louis Kahn's and I just love concrete and glass and, you know, when I first. Was working with Tony, you know, I didn't see any concrete and glass buildings in Palo Alto and I was wondering, hey, why don't we. Design something, you know, the next project with the right, when the right project comes along, you know, well, we should propose something with concrete and glass and. And one day I was driving by on Hamilton and I, we, I did a tenant improvement project at six thirty-five Waverly. Which is directly across the street from it and. All of a sudden I see this building and I'm like, wow, you know, concrete and glass. It was super cool.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so first of all, thank you very much for applying for this. I see this is, you know, maybe this is, maybe it's the same answer as, 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 as Pat's question. But I was gonna ask, what's a project example in Palo Alto that you think works really well and why?
What works really well that I've seen on. El Camino, all, El Camino Real, there is a project right. At the corner of, it's next to the Coronet Motel.
On the same side, so down there sort of near where Mike's bikes used to be?
Yeah, on El Camino Real, north of Page Mill. Right besides Coronet Motel, there is a retail, mixed-use retail and commercial office building. I think that works really nice because of the material, the mass. Massing is really well done. The materials chosen. Are, there's enough variety and. Character. The material gives it a lot of character and the shape is just a beautiful structure, I think. And the one directly across from it is equally is nice.
Cool.
Thanks. For the same reason, the, what's the siding they used is. I don't think we've seen that on the El Camino Corridor in Palo Alto. I, I think, I believe that's the first building that I've seen on the El Camino Corridor using that wood vertical siding. Which was very interesting.
Allison.
Mr. Patel. What two words would people who have worked with you use to describe you and how you do your work?
The first one is I am a very meticulous detailer. So I love. Doing construction documents. And I do a lot of detailing and I just love how materials come together and how they should come together very cleanly. The use of appropriate materials. I like to put them together in a very clean way. And the other one is that I'm, I'm a really fun-loving guy, even at work. I'm a foodie. I love to hit the gym. I'm a people's person because I am in the hospitality as well. I've done everything in the hotel business from, you know, housekeeping. I grew up in the business, so. I've done everything, housekeeping, maintenance, checking people in and out, room service, you name it. And you have to be a people's person. In order to do that.
Thanks so much. I see we're running out of time. I'll hand it back to the mayor.
One quick question. So do you work with Grace Lee?
I know Grace Lee. Yep, I've known her since two thousand and. I believe it was the two thousand and eight.
Are you guys both in the same firm?
Right. We both, we have worked with Tony Carrasco.
Great. Okay, thank you. And thanks for applying.
Good night.
So our, so now our next candidate is Bin Zhao. Bin, you, you should be able to unmute. And if you want, you can turn your camera on as well.
I'm here. Hey, everybody and the city councils, good night. And my name is Inzo. Can everybody help me?
Yes. So you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll ask you a few questions?
Okay, I can introduce myself. My name is Bin and I actually start with a software engineer career. I've been coding for over like thirteen years and. My background was a graduate and undergraduate course in computer science and I also went to the MBA program in Virginia Tech. So I, I was the start with software and the later back, back in. Two thousand thirteen and I met my mentor and I switched my career path. To real estate and started as, you know, my passion with architecture. Because I was grew up in a construction family. My father and my grandfather. Was a very good carpenter before. So I was. Started learning all these details from my parents and my grandfathers. So I was interested in these activities. So back in the two thousand thirteen, I met my mentor and I started my real estate. Then as like I started to design some architecture and then I work as a general contractor. And then we start to build the homes in different cities in Bay Area. I see a lot of homes because personally, I have worked in. I did a lot of travel when I was young, basically in my twenties. So I worked seven states in, you know, seven different states, most of them are east coast. And then I, in Bay Area, I lived in, start from La Presidente. And then moved to Fremont and then to Santa Clara and then Cupertino, then to Prato. So I see a lot. So when I, you know, luckily I saw this email from city council and other invitations for applying this. And I'm happy to apply that. So I would think I can bring the value and as a volunteer position, I would love to work for the community. So that's my opening.
Great, thank you. And, and just, just a very interesting career. You, you're not a licensed architect, is that correct?
I'm not, but I'm a licensed general contractor.
Got it. Okay.
And actually the invitation is started with, I saw that in my, my company's email. So it's not about my personal email and, and then I knew that because I build the homes in Prato. So I think maybe this is part of in the system.
I have some questions from council members.
Yeah, any questions, feel free to.
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Mrs. Zhao, thank you so much for applying. It's great that you have a lot of experience building, so you kind of understand the process. It also sounds like you're a really strong education technical background, so that's actually pretty cool. So you've seen a lot of homes and designs in our city architecturally. How do you think, what do you think we could do as a city that would make the designs better, stronger, more effective, more livable, more affordable? I mean, it seems like you, you're kind of in the industry, so I'd love to get your insight in terms of how do you think we could accomplish some of those goals that, you know, we all want. But are hard, hard to get.
Okay, thank you very much, Greg. Yeah, I see when I drive by and when I work as a project in Prato. And also I always look around all these streets. And I build homes in Fernando and also Brian Street. We have some other projects designed in the Oregon, Oregon Avenue as well. So, and I also see a lot of homes, especially we build more homes in Cupertino area. You can see there's a lot of new homes, especially these, you know, modern Mediterranean homes and a lot of new buildings. So when I look around the Prato, the homes in Pratos are really expensive. So I would think. And there's a lot of historical things we want to keep. So when I look at that, like promote older and Hummer is a. Development of a city is very important. We don't want to get rid of all these historical things. We want to keep them. That's part of the. You know, that definitely treasure of our city. And for me, I would bring up a few ideas about the, you know, as a contract, as, as a homeowner. And as a part of the community would say, better to make our city, like especially the residential homes. I'm have more experience on residential homes, maybe not much experience on commercial. But for residential homes, we want to have like a better looking. Better looking is means like the, like. These new moving homes, homeowners, usually they'll be young professionals. Right? And they have different viewing and the different lifestyle. So they want to look maybe more, you can, we can see some contemporary homes. And some more, you know, we want to keep old, but we want also be, you know, better looking. It's maybe be more match current culture. And also, like, we want to have some homes more easy use. Except, for example, some like driveways or some neighborhoods, it's easy to access. Maybe not that spacious, but you know, since we are, the land is very expensive, but we want to have easy use. The layout of the home be more usable. And also, we want to have a green homes. Especially is very important for our, like, you know, very populated city. And it's a very green homes, for example, use less pollution and less. More environmental saving materials and some like composite materials instead of natural materials. And also, we want to make sure all the debrits, you know, the construction debrits and all these. To be recycled and to be dumped into the right place. And also, we want to make it a safe house. So especially the structure, the height and the, you know, the neighborhood. The cross and the directions, we make sure the kids crossing and biking people more safe. And the later, not the last, not the least, we want to make the home more or smart. Because the technology, we are the center, we are the center of the, the Silicon Valley is the center of the world. And Prato is the center of the Silicon, Silicon Valley. So there's be a lot where we can promote more smart technologies. We use the B homes and make it more modern.
Thank you. So we have two more questions. We have two minutes. Allison and then Eric.
Mr. Zhao, thank you. We're, I'll skip the preamble since we're short on time. What are two words that people you worked with, either when you were an engineer or now in your construction work? Would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I'm a very creative thinking person. I like learning, but I'm very good at team player. I will obviously, I will never let my team players, team members down. And I want to, we always get along with people and also I'm a deliver guy. I'm not, you know, we just, I'm committed and deliver.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all the city members, council and, and giving me the opportunity to interview and appreciate and. I hope I have a chance to contribute my value to the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have time for one more question. Eric, you want to ask?
Well, I was just gonna ask quickly. You've got, you've got a really interesting background and you've, you've sort of know both Palo Alto and Cupertino. And so I was curious, do you, do you see architectural, significant architectural differences between? Stuff built in Palo Alto and stuff built in Cupertino? I mean, is it pretty similar or are there some major differences?
There's some similarity and then some difference. And I know not only the Cupertino, I know a lot of San Jose, we build homes in San Jose and the Melo Park and the Fremont also. But in Cupertino, you know, the, the ratio coverage is more and they're not counting the garage area. So. There are a lot of second stories in Cupertino and but in Prato, there's a lot of, there's many. Anchor homes and there are a lot more historical thing we want to keep. And so we don't want to, for, for my, I don't want to sacrifice all these historicals. Part of the treasure of Prato. So we want to save the, you know, the cost and make good looking and, you know. Good housings for, for, for residents.
Thanks. Okay. Well, thank you very much and thank you for applying. Our next interview is Jim Zhao. Jim. You should be able to unmute yourself and turn on your camera. There you go. So I, I don't know if you were, if you were listening. You have ten minutes. And if you just want to introduce yourself and give us a little bit of your background, then we'll ask you questions.
Yeah, this is Jim. I come from technology background, but has been eight years. I have been focusing in real estate. And we have constructed several homes in San Jose, Saratoga. Cupertino and the most recent one is in Prato. So this is really opened me, give me a chance to curb all of the neighborhood, especially. I can feel the state has been transitioning the city style of life. I mean, the country style of life into city style of life. Especially the ADU, the new law and the SB nine. Power is going to be taking effect from the next year. So the construction we have done in Palo Alto is basically conforming with the green building code. Both of them are tier two, the main units and ADU. So really gave me a chance to work very closely with the planning department. Including George's team and Bob's Dummer, his booking team. We, we have a very nice experience working with the whole city committee. And I can feel the, the change in Prado neighborhood is a great chance. If I can be selected, it's a great chance for me to participate, to experience and to change facing the new law. Facing the ADU, facing the transition from the country style, lifestyle into a city style. Especially, especially I can feel that. The, the proposition thirteen really is affecting neighborhood. Like this year. Cupertino is closing down three schools. Palo Alto used to have, used to be like three high school, now only two. Lot of young family that want. Lot of young family that want to leaving such a neighborhood, but unfortunately, there's not, not enough capacity. And also we can feel like some decay in, in the neighborhood. So we really need to attract a new family, we also need to attract a new investment in the neighborhood. I hope I can make some contribution to the, yeah, planning committee.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, so Mr. Zhao, thank you so much for applying. I love it with people who have technical backgrounds and also construction experience, seems like you know this area well. So one question for you is, it seems like you've probably been through the ARB process in the, in the course of building here in our city. And I was curious to know from your perspective, what do you think we could do as a city that can make the ARB process easier, more efficient than it currently is?
There's one book published by Bob Starmer, which is particularly very helpful to me. And right now, I've been working very closely with the city for the whole like plan review and all the permitting process. So it was basically, we have to meet face to face, the COVID nineteen really changing the process. So now the whole thing is moved to the, the web, to the, to the cloud. Definitely that's great help. And I think what's lacking here is a very clear workflow. If we can have such thing to guide through every professional to follow all the instruction. And also has, have some like AI technology in the back, 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 back end evaluating and then basically as like kind of like watch over to, to make sure everything is conforming and also reminding people to follow the standard, that would be helpful. Yeah, that's actually something, something I'm, I, I, I'm trying to bring in, I have more than 10 years of AI background and also like a BPM in high tech.
Okay, great, thank you.
So are you planning to do more projects in Palo Alto?
Yes, right now I'm extremely comfortable with working in Palo Alto, especially the green code, the green hollow. And also the, the project I just finished is of two units, totally three thousand square feet. The main, main house is five four, the ADU is two two. So that's really something, we are actually the first batch of ADU applicants. And the project was pretty smooth. The planning stage, we have gone through a lot of code change, a lot of law change because of ADU had been recently adopted. Yeah, so the standard was evolving, we did go through a lot of revision in the planning process. But once the plan was approved, totally we have three permits, one is for demo, two will be for the construction, one is for the main units and one is for the ADU. Because now following even the standard.
But going forward, you plan to build more projects in future years?
Yes, yes, that's actually especially, I'm watching, you know, Musk. So basically he's investing a company called Boxball, which is basically a small, kind of like a unit dedicated for like, kind of like ADU style. So that's, that's kind of like an ideal solution for family, either want second units for the in-law or want extra units for the kids, even though working in Silicon Valley. So instead of like tail down and find a new land, they can just use the, some, some space in the backyard, probably to be able to accommodate the, the, the parents or the kids. If the kids are working in, in the Silicon Valley as well. So that's something I think is a great chance to, to reinvest into neighborhood and also, yeah, improve the community.
Okay.
Especially, I can say, I think a school is depends on those new family, otherwise the school will be closed, like Cupertino, they need to close down three school, including like a Nembroke High, which is top high school, is amazing question.
Yep, yeah, okay, Allison has a question.
Yes, hello, good evening, Mr. Zhao, thank you so much for applying. We're interested, not only, I'm interested not only in what people do, but how people do their work. So either in your software experience or now in your contracting experience, what are two words that people who work with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I'm a very much an engineer, so they will be using the word of like strict standard. And even I'm a builder, but people will say, Jim, you're always trying to build this house as your own. Yeah, I actually I did some tough lesson as well, based on that. So, but this is actually a great thing when I was working with the city. So during, during the construction in Palo Alto, we are going through a very strict code, including like a green code compliance on the order title twenty four. And all the, all the, including green hollow, those are procedure. Pretty much our whole construction finished in 10 months, which is pretty rare in Palo Alto. Yeah, majority of my inspection was finished and passed in one pass, in one inspection. So that's actually we, we were benefited from the sticking to the standard. I have, I always have my, my book from, from the city, doesn't like a, published by Bob Starmer, the former chief inspector of this, inspection officer in Palo Alto. Yeah, so everything was, we're following that, stick to the standard, that's kind of like my engineer style.
Thank you.
So we have about a minute and a half left, Lydia.
Yeah, I don't know if this will, so the answer, you know, in Palo Alto, open space, backyard habitat. Trees are pretty important to a lot of the community here. So how would you consider incorporating a existing tree on a property as you're building your, your structure?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I, I, I know that Palo Alto has some protective tree code, including city tree and also like some heritage tree, like redwood and also oak. And ADU probably is not for everybody, especially if a lot of house probably is sitting in the one six area. Probably that's for more like the big, the big lot home. Yeah, so the reason I'm mentioning about the Unimask's Boxball is, is more like portable and it's not so big, it's not so intrusive. Yeah, it's not like we're going to fill the whole yard with the construction. That is take, this will take good design and also the whole consideration, including like the backyard design and also the playing around, everything. Yeah, to deliver very good results, otherwise it's more like a concrete forest.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that because you know, you, you talk a lot about ADUs and, you know, it almost sounds like it might maximize the lot. So I'm glad to hear that you don't want to see a concrete forest. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Lydia, that's why I'm proposing smaller one, instead of like, especially in Cupertino, you see a lot of houses maximized.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, we're out of time, but thank you for applying, I know the 10 minutes goes very fast, thank you.
Thank you so much for the interview.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Our next, next candidate is Valerie Driscoll. She's applying for both ARB and HRP. Valerie, if you're there, you should be able to turn your camera on as well, if you wish. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good, sir.
So.
These men are very qualified. I don't know that I have anywhere near the experience, but I agree with many of the things they say. It was asking me to enter in something in here, there's something in front of the screen.
I'm not sure. We could stop the clock for a second, please.
I don't know.
Are you trying to turn your camera on?
Trying to enter in what is required of me here, I'm not really sure, start meeting, I guess is what it is. Waiting for invite, I don't know what I should do, hit invite.
You're in, I think.
I'm in, okay, should I get rid of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have 10 minutes, do you want to give us a little introduction and then we'll.
Thank you. My background has been with some engineering and having worked for an architecture firm. Also, I'm familiar with blueprints and attended many of your meetings in Palo Alto. I do very well with analyzing plans, your planning commission, et cetera. And I have many of the same concerns that these gentlemen have about the type of housing and zoning and the modern accommodations and the architecture being similar somewhat in Palo as it is, Palo Alto as it is in Cupertino. I don't have the building background qualifications they have, but I am very dedicated to preserving the history of Palo Alto. I've had the pleasure of living there, wasn't a safe place unfortunately, but having gone to so many meetings and seeing the possibility of managing, planning and maintaining the quality, which is very important to me. I don't know if historic review board or historic resource would be more appropriate, but since I don't have a lot of experiences, these gentlemen do with building. I still have the same interests in seeing the plans and making your progress, your, the general progress and your projects fit. And as far as green is concerned and as their concerns are for more of the modern and good use of space for families, as well as for the high tech communities, which are pretty prevalent in Palo Alto as we know. And making them work more functionally as these two gentlemen are stating. But, and however it is that your zoning laws and whatever else that is required, I do have some legal background and paralegal studies, as well as administrative, counting, managing background. So I tend to look at things also from your zoning coding. All of that, it comes naturally, so I could learn, but in terms of the experience that they have, I haven't had any building experience, some with architectural firm with plans and that sort of thing, not actually doing the building. So I have to be very honest with you about that, they look like they're very qualified, but my concerns for being involved with the process, working with the council and assisting for looking at the plans and the economic, the revenues, what it takes to put it together, bidding and all of that. It's very, very interesting to me and I like all of the process. So I can say that I'm very literate and I understand how to read and, you know, understand the terminology. I probably would have to, yeah, learn a little bit more about some of what they're referring to in some of the specific design codes, but I learned very rapidly. And I learned by watching, so, but other than that, if you have any questions for me, this is probably a good time to ask.
I'll, I'll start off, so I noticed you don't live in Palo Alto.
I don't.
What, what made you interested in serving in Palo Alto?
Because at one time I lived in Palo Alto. In fact, when I talked to Mr. Pat Bird, I asked if he could reduce taxes for a building I lived in. Unfortunately, there was an unsavory, unsafe element in there, I had to leave, otherwise I would have continued because I went to so many of the meetings. And it was just so easy to navigate in those meetings and looking at the J-Paul project that I was very excited about to watch and the revenues. And it's just something that comes very naturally and I have a love for the city and their processes and city management, all the people there. They, they are very streamlined is the term that comes to mind in the way that they put things together and maintain the history and the quality. But the way they put projects together to reach the outcome that they do is very exciting. If you have any other questions, say.
Are you talking about the J-Paul project on Park Boulevard?
This is the one that they put together that incorporated like a campus. I don't know if they ever were able to put all of that together with a new police department, but it was terribly exciting at the time and as regards the traffic issues that exist. It was kind of a challenge at the time, I remember, because they do have some challenges with that and as well as when the gentlemen are mentioning about housing for families, that is a very big concern for many of us, for your city. Those who have an interest and concern, also the high tech communities and for business and to encourage more business over there. The J-Paul project, we, we talked about some of that, I remember in the meetings that you had. And in terms of other meetings about encouraging better business and trying to encourage people into the city and preserving the history and making these projects such that you can attract and keep these, these very special families and high tech community people. So that's what I can tell you from what I recall, and if you have more questions, that would be of some help since I have had to move.
Sure.
So it's been hard, I haven't been able to.
I see Allison, Corvett has a question.
Ms. Driscoll, I want to start by saying, I'm sorry to hear that Palo Alto was not a safe place for you and that you had to move. And then my question for you, I see you have a varied work background. When you're working in teams, what, what are things, what are the two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Very definitely, when I was at Palo Alto, they were impressed by my ability to cognate, understand, learn quickly. And my really love of the colleagues that you have, they make it very comfortable for me to communicate and to feel ease in getting up and running with any of the documentation, it's just very easy to do. So what they would say is that I'm a quick learner. The gentleman said, say, team player, but I would say I'm more of a quick learner and someone who fits very easily with the types of personalities in the complexities of the environment, be it planning personalities, engineers. I've been used to working with them in the past. Administratively, even in angioplasty firm, I remember, but terminology comes quickly and easily. And even building, planning terminology, also having to do with revenues, et cetera, language and bidding and processes, all of those terms come very quickly and easily in legal terms. So what they would say is that I'm a quick learner, I understand quickly and I'm very good with communication.
All right, well, again, as always, you, people have me when they say communication, thank you.
Lydia, you have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll, for applying and I wanted to find out, you know, you, you applied also for the historic resources board and I was wondering what is, which historical building here in Palo Alto would be one of your favorites?
You know, your city hall and some of the surrounding buildings in that area and Hamilton Avenue and some of the, in the postal building itself too is, they're very well made. Just like the gentleman we're talking about earlier, some of the structures as you find in Cupertino are exceptional. And we need to maintain that quality. Some of the surrounding areas, they're doing more modern kind of building and they do need that too and for space preservation and now they're building upward. But I would say those buildings, they seem to be built well. And the style that you see the post office is done in, trying to think some of the other buildings downtown, you have quite a number of them in close proximity to city hall. And even just the downtown area, some of the architecture is and the structure is very firm and very well done. And so these are, and artistic as well, all of that's very important to me. That's why resources are important, but also the structures, you can't have one without the other. And it's nice to see that Palo Alto likes to combine both of those features in what they do. But also that their laws and everything that they put together are always in conjunction with those projects in every project you see. So I'm very excited about all of that integration. If you have more questions, want me to be more specific, you can ask questions, but I know I'm very non-specific, but generally speaking.
We're actually at the end of the 10 minutes, it goes very fast. Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Our next interview is, sorry, Eugene Gion. I believe he's in, in chambers. And again, I can't really see, see there.
She's coming.
Hi, if you want to give us a quick introduction and tell us a little bit about yourself.
I say thank you so much for having me here in this late. I'm really, really appreciate your time. Hopefully you had a dinner and some little rest. We're almost there. So our answer, short as possible. I know this 10 minutes is such a short time. I can't even believe it is so short. I drive from Orinda to here to meet. I don't want a Zoom meeting because I want you to see my passion to contribute this here. And I just honored to be here, even you select this face. It's just so, thank you. And I want to see you who you are, not the monitor. I just want to feel you how passionate here, this late, working hard for the city. Thank you. Okay. And I am, I am an architecture designer and I have owned my company, Architecture Farm. I'm the, I'm the owner, CEO, and I'm doing this for 25 years. And then I work in commercial project and residential project and many different. And also I just finished one restaurant project called Sweet Maple. And they're wonderful restaurant. I don't know you heard, it's everywhere, even airport. And we rented it here, my client and I, I'm sorry, this mask is a little echoing. So my client and I are looking for everywhere the best location and Walnut Creek, San Francisco, everywhere, even LA. We rented in here Palo Alto and very new, new to me to this city, but she and I ended let's open here because it's very vibrant and very cultural and then very diversity city and we can see a lot of energy. So we opened. I'm the witness and then I see when we submit this project right before COVID. So I seen it before, like a paper submit to the electorium summit, I seen it. And I, I was very impressed how your system is so well, quickly made. And like us, like a designer and architect, easy to submit and so friendly. And then one most I really impressed with this city. We worked so long and then last year, end of last year, we really want to permit soon, but it's COVID time. It's just very little bit, you know. I don't know. It's a little different system you submit, but I work with the planning department, building department, David Tong, and they work very late hour and even like 1:00 AM, they answer my phone. And then I asking them, please make this big gifts permit approval to my client and Christmas gifts. And then they approve Christmas Eve. So that time I crying and then I got this approval to the client and then everybody crying and how wonderful city it is. And then one of my goal is, one of my goal is after 50 years old, I really want to some volunteer work and I've been too busy working. I never really volunteer work heavily. So I thought this is, this is my bucket list. If I ever chance work in this city, I'll be very honored to work with you and people very hard and trying to make this city very nice.
Let's, let's ask you a few questions before you run out of time. Pat, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So I, I was noticing that you speak about harmonious design and also that your favorite architect is Endo Tadao. And so I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about your idea of harmonious design and how architecture such as his achieves that.
Endo Tadao is one of my favorite architect because he, his design is very simple and use your natural material. And he's the first using concrete structure building to the exterior to the decorative material. So I'm really into the, using the nice natural material. And then he was, he was the kind of a wake me up to, I want to be an architect. And then he was the boxer. And then I grew up with a very poor family and then I didn't have a house, but my burning desire have a beautiful space for everybody. And I think inside and outside, no matter where you go, commercial or residential, you should have every place is welcoming and then comfortable and secure space. And I really, I really care of that. And also I work with Vivian Architect in Milketa Spa Station. You see in my background and I work with artists and many different engineer and architect. We, we finished the beautiful bar station and then I was heavily involved that material for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah. So thank you so much for applying. Really like your deep experience in architecture and the building and all that. And also I really appreciate your interest in trying to get back to the community. That's one of the reasons why I also volunteer. So I think it's, I think it's great. And given your experience, I was wondering if you can talk a little bit about, how do you think, and I'm interested, especially because you did, you have some commercial design as well. How do you think we can improve the architecture in Palo Alto?
Okay, I, I worked on several different commercials, which is a PF Chang was, I was worked on the five different prototype design PF Chang. I worked on the Palo Alto and then also I did many different like a William Sonoma, those kind of. And then the restaurant is Sweet Maple here. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not, I don't know very much about Palo Alto City. But one of my dream is, is retire in Palo Alto City. Because it's just my personal and, and have a great hospital and then great, great, unique city. And go back to your question is how can I improve the design? And I will do, I'll, first of all, I will follow your code and your gray system. And then I might have some small idea here and there and share with you. I love working with the people. I love to hear. And I have a, I'm very passionate and energetic person, as you see. And then I will constantly come up with a great idea to work both side. And I work the other side, somebody submitting, submitting size. I know I will be good person to watch the, watch the downside and then good communication. I can understand both side. And one thing I really want to work on if I ever have a chance. And when I working submitted to the, the plan and I see if, if somebody can create a graphic board to submitting this system, that will be amazing helping for other people, architect and even homeowner. That will be amazing. And I'm really happy to start with that, that direction if you really need to. And like us, we easy to know how to do submit the permit. But not many people know and then people some struggling and, but I would like to have a great graphic and map together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I can ask you a quick question. So an architectural designer is not a licensed architect, right? Do you have to work with an architect?
Okay, I'm not a licensed architect, but I work with architecture company. I have all experience of what architect does. And then good things about me, I'm not just only architect work. I do the design side as well. So I do both. I can handle both design and architect side.
Okay, Alison.
Ms. John, thank you so much for joining us and for driving across the bay to meet with us. I will say I'm glad to hear that you cried tears of happiness with our, our planning department. Sometimes I think there are tears of frustration. So we'll be sure to pass on your compliments. You, you provided many references. What, if you could pick out two words from that, what, what do people who've worked with you, what would they say about you and your work?
Many people telling me I'm very creative and I'm very passionate person and everything on time, on budget. And I treat my old client as this is my last client because I don't do advertising, a hundred percent referral. So somebody have to refer me to find me and every client is my last client in, in very important. So everybody saying I'm on time, on budget and happy energy and very passionate and creative.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I ask one question? Lynn, 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 Lydia? Yeah, hi. Can I ask what is the good, how do you like this, this opportunity? It contribute doing this?
You mean me as a council member? Oh, well, it's mostly being able to, is that okay, mayor? I'm so sorry.
Sure.
Well, it's, it's actually being able to hear, hear the community, what they like, what they want, what are the benefits to them? Mostly community service.
That's great to hear.
Public servant. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are, we are out of time. One last quick question. I guess you would be able to be here for our 8:30 AM meetings.
Of course, of course.
Quite a, quite a drive for you. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm coming here every week anyway for the project. So I really enjoying it over the bridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think we're at our last interview with David Hirsch. David, I'll make you a panelist. You should be able to turn your camera on as well if you'd like. David, we hear us. Sorry, did we lose him? I'm not seeing David. Is the city clerk, do you see him?
No, it appears he has disconnected. Maybe he will rejoin in a moment.
Just for the council, you know, we do have a requirement on the ARB for architects with one non-architect and I looked at our code. I'm not exactly clear which of our candidates qualify and don't. So I've asked this to the attorney, so I will ask her to give an answer to all of us. Just in terms of contractors, designers, et cetera.
Mr. Hirsch is back online, sir.
Great. All right, David.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can. And if you want to turn your camera on, you can.
I'm not sure I see where I can, but.
That's okay. We know what you look like.
Okay.
Do you want to start the short introduction and we'll get the questions in 10 minutes if I think you know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I, I would like to be shown and as animated as the last person, but I, I don't think I have her energy. So, but I have a fair amount of experience in New York to begin with as an urban designer. Bringing downtown Brooklyn into the next century. It was in bad shape when, when I was there, living there and working in the downtown area. And we built a mall and we did waterfront work and we were very involved with the city agencies and we had direct line connection to people who could make our ideas for urban renewal work, agency connections that got straight to the mayor's office. It was a mayor's office concept to start this office. And then I began my own office, paying for my draftsman, but not myself, for my wife is a bookkeeper and it has grown. We've, we did, it's called Urban Architectural Initiatives. I invented the name at least to begin with. And we mostly, in the end, built mostly housing, mostly supportive housing. But along the way, I, I did a $30 million school building in an area of Brooklyn. A wonderful addition to a historic building. I built a, we, we designed a and built a community center in the Bronx, Mary Mitchell Family and Youth Center. Very exciting little project. And a number of other civic buildings and restorations of post offices and but ending up with a considerable amount of affordable, supportive housing all over, kind of all over the city, Brooklyn and the Bronx a lot and Upper Manhattan and Harlem. And then in the end, I've ended up actually doing some developing as well. So became familiar with the whole process of development. We actually submitted a small group of us for city project and won it in Western Harlem and renovated four buildings into eight duplexes and then combined to, to whole law tenement buildings together with a central elevator and site improvements. So considerable amount of improvement there, but then, you know, came out here, my daughter was here. So I, I was impressed the first, after a while, of course, I'd like to just say, let me just say that I accept all of Keith Rektall's description of the, of Palo Alto. And let's move into what we are involved in on the ARB. The, the books we read, the, the comp plan and the zoning resolution and the ARB findings. They're all just terrific documents and it's quite different. New York City has a totally objective zoning, building code. And then we have here the comp plan and the zoning resolution and the parts of it are objective and subjective. And I really was impressed reading the subjective portions of the, of the zoning code. And so now we're at a kind of a crisis point here in the city because we're told we have to be totally objective. And I don't think that's being an architect. You can't be an architect and be both subjective and objective. And I prefer to leave it together. And I think we need to find a way to make that work and I'd like to be helpful in that respect. The subjective portion of it. How, how to, how to do it? Well, let me just say that what we've put together so far, and I was very much involved in it right through all of the hearings that we had at the ARB. The, the, it isn't objective when in, in the end, the planning director is the one who makes a decision as to whether it works or not. While I agree with Peter that the materials were what he said they were and they are, and we attempted to expand them. The other aspect of that is that we have a very restrictive The other aspect of that is that we have a very restrictive set of, of objective, supposedly objective opinions in what was put together. So I'm unhappy with it and I voted against it and I hope that we can improve it. I, I think that we have a bottom, middle, top kind of a classical concept. It's filled, filling all of the pages of our document there. And it isn't appropriate, it won't be appropriate when we start building larger buildings, larger housing buildings that, that simply don't, don't fit the image of, of a bottom, middle, top. So I'm going to try to preempt Allison's words here a bit. So I'm going to say that my character is tenacious and persistent because I have ideas and I like to try to get them to work. And if I might, I would say I would go right into what I would finish actually, this whole discussion is to say that what Peter and I put together in our proposal to, to you recently is, is something that the city has to really grab a hold of and fast. It's dangerous right now. I'm looked at a project today, yesterday, I guess it was, which includes a request to, to not use just about every item that we use in examining and approving our, our applications. The, the, am I over time here?
No, but I'd like to ask you a question before we run out of time.
Yep.
So we've, we've had an unusual range candidates for the ARB tonight. Could you shed some light or your opinion, I guess, on contractors, builders, designers? How, how, how they might function on the ARB and?
Yeah. I listened to them.
Even, and I'm not even really sure what a designer does, to be honest.
Clarify. Looks, it's, it's a little unfair for me to talk about them as candidates because they have a legitimate right to come in. And, and Palo Alto is great about that. You know, all of your people tonight were quite interesting. But there was a, certainly a higher level of, of candidate tonight. And if you're really asking me, I would say that.
I'm not asking about the particular candidates.
Not about, just about the different qualities of them. Yes, the, I don't think that, that most of the ones who are more involved in construction will fit in with us. I don't think so because they really don't, they really don't have the proper experience and background. But there were some couple of very, very good candidates. Obviously, the historic woman is just pretty incredible. Brigham Wilson, I'm sorry, I shouldn't really be talking about them individually.
Yeah, I really was trying to understand the roles and how they all function together.
Yes.
Like the, the designer, a designer is not a licensed architect is my understanding, right?
Well, she works with architects, but I think most of, it appears to me that most of her work is interior work, restaurant work. And so I think that it's not a broad enough experience to really talk about the aesthetics of the city.
Okay. Yeah. Again, I wasn't, I wasn't really asked about the individuals. I just wanted to understand what the roles were. That was all.
Yeah.
Um, anybody else have a quick question? Well, I think we managed to use up 10 minutes.
All the time. And I did it all of mine.
Nice to see you, David.
Nice to see you, Eric.
Yeah. Thanks for reapplying.
Okay. Hope you will keep me on.
Okay. And thank you to our council. I think we are at the end of the evening. And with that, I would just say, meeting adjourned. Good night.
Good night.